Are we recording?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to our March ninth, 2023 meeting. All times on this agenda are approximate. Consideration of items may require less, may require more or less time than is scheduled. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration. And the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Public comment is designated for discussion only. The public has the opportunity to address the commission on any matter not appearing on the agenda. However, no action may be taken on any matter raised until the matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Additionally, public comment may be heard on any item listed on the agenda. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any agenda item at the Lander County Commission Board meeting. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person at the discretion of the commission. Please note that the public body may interrupt the open meeting and exclude the public for the purpose of having an attorney-client discussion of potential and existing litigation which is pursuant to NRS 241-0153-B2. I'll call this meeting to order. JR, will you lead us in the pledge?
You bet.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15 PM. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commissioners' reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Patsy?
No report, thank you.
I have no report. JR?
Nothing to report.
Okay, Mike?
Nothing.
Okay. We'll move into staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended.
Good morning, Commission. We did receive our grant agreement for the Awesome Community Center, and that's for the $638,000. I'm reading through that agreement, and then I'll bring it back before you guys for approval. The interesting thing that I found about that is that we have until 2031 to execute that grant funding. Obviously, we want to execute that much sooner and get the community center up and going, but I found that interesting. We did meet with the Tax Commission, and we did stay on the guaranteed grant waiver status that the county is on. It was a little tougher meeting on us than we were prepared for because in the past, we haven't had to say much. We've just kind of leaned on the Attorney General's opinion of it being beneficial to not only our county, but all the surrounding counties as well. But is what they're looking for in the upcoming years when we present to them is the funds that we're putting towards growing, you know, water lines, infrastructure, things like that, that will help sustain our own tax base and not be on that guaranteed status, regardless if it's a benefit to the other counties around us or not. And then Holly Gatzke met with Liz in Laken. I wasn't available on the UNR extension position, and they will be changing that to an administrative facility person. And that position will have less requirements, and then they'll be moving forward with that. So hopefully, we can bring something back before you guys on getting that position filled here in our community.
Good. Glad to hear that.
And then you guys have pictures of the statues that are going to go on the freeway in front of you. I've laid some up here in case anybody in the public would like to see them. I believe we have an eagle, a cowboy riding a bucking horse, and then a miner with a pick. So that's what's going on each of our exits here in Battle Mountain. And then I am in the final process, endows reviewing the interlocal agreement. And once they have it approved through their internal steps, then we'll bring it back before you guys and get that approved so we can start working with them on Gilbert Creek and start doing some improvements there. They have some funds that they would like to bring and leverage off of our funds as well. And then the last thing is, I'm not sure if we want to make this an agenda item or if the commission just wants to give direction or do nothing at all. But I was approached this last week by a lady who has one of, I believe, two or five, I don't know the number exactly, statues of the individual we have in the park, the man holding the baby, the statue we have in our... So I don't know if we, it's a miniature statue. They were wondering if the county would be interested in trying to purchase that. I know that we did have one in the past, but it is not here. So I'm not sure if you guys would be interested in looking at another. So with that, I think unless anybody has anything for me, that's all that I have to update on.
Correct. Thank you, Bert. We'll move into public comment for non-agendaized items only. Do we have public comment? Okay. We'll move into the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the Board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. One, approval of March ninth, 2023 Agenda Notice. Two, approval of January twenty-sixth, 2023 Meeting Minutes. Three, approval of February ninth, 2023 Meeting Minutes. Four, approval of February twenty-third, 2023 Meeting Minutes. And five, approval of payroll change requests.
With no changes to the agenda, I make a motion we approve number one and number two.
Okay, we have a motion from Patsy.
I'll second it.
Second from JR. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimously passes. We'll move into item one. For discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove payment of bills, we'll need to pull checks number 218-904, 218-827, checks 3366, and check 218-885. I have a motion to for the remainder.
I have a question on 211-001.
211? What is it, Mike?
Do you have a page number for us, Matt?
It is page two of ten, so packet number two.
What's the check number?
I have it wrong. It's wrong. I went off that number I asked you about earlier.
Yes.
It's Victor Keith Knutson. It's check 3373.
So thirty-three seventy-three?
Community Health Medical Director.
So thirty-three seventy-three?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll pull that one as well. Do I have a motion to pay the remainder?
I'll make a motion to pay the remainder of the bills.
JR made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Mike seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Patsy's unanimously.
I make a motion we approve check number 218-904 and 218-827.
Okay. Patsy made the motion. Mike seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and I will abstain there made to point to my employer. Okay, so Patsy, you wanted to discuss check number 3366 and 218-885.
Right.
So 3366 was for consulting, and I think it was an amount of $4,000, but it doesn't specify who it's made to.
So my question is, but what is...
Yeah, I should say I'm the checker. Sorry, it's made to make shame.
It doesn't, does that...
That's the people that are doing our...
That's okay. That's what I thought, but it doesn't say it on our thing here.
Yes, that is a contract payment. And then to speak to Victor Knutson, that is the doctor that fills in for Dr. Wilcourt in his absence. And so we do not pay Dr. Wilcourt his payment, and it goes to Knutson when he fills in.
Okay, so that was on check 3373, okay? And then also, Patsy had a question on check 218-885. It was for Huck, Salt, and Sons, and it was firewood, general assistance?
Yes, and that goes to the senior center. That is for the elderly in our community that can't afford to buy their own wood. They put in through the senior center, and then we deliver the wood to them at their home.
So it was, we seen the amount was for 2,500. So how much wood was that for 2,500?
I don't know.
A lot of cords.
Seven cords?
Seven, yep.
And that was to one person?
No. No, 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 no. We, we order it by bulk, and then we bring it and deliver.
Okay.
Does that include Austin too?
Yes.
That is Austin.
So we have a record of everybody we're giving it to?
Correct. And, and we order from Honeywell in Winnemucca for the Battle Mountain side of this. And then we deliver that to, it's delivered to the Roden Bridgeyard here, and then we load it in the truck and take it to the seniors' homes that can't afford.
Thank you. I'll make a motion we approve those last three checks.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
JR seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Patsy's unanimously. Okay, we'll move into item two. Update from the library specialist on the Battle Mountain library, including but not limited to usage, current and past events, books, and activities that are available within the library. Morning, guys.
My name's Rebecca Lake.
Sean Baker for the record.
Good morning. So things are still going well with the library. Our storytime has continued to thrive. I brought in local Girl Scout troops to help with storytime, to kind of bring in that community aspect. It was very well received, and we actually had eighty-seven patrons come in that day to the library. We're still changing displays. We're just doing anything we can to pique the interest of our community. We had an adult workshop in February. This was our smallest one because there was some confusion with the construction, whether we were open or not. But we were able to make enough little bookmarks to deliver to the Lander County Senior Center and long-term care residents. Even with the library being closed for a week out of the month of February, we still had a total of 429 patrons. That is an increase from last year of 259. That's about it. That's all I have. It's kind of short and sweet.
Well, that sounds like you doubled the people coming in.
Yeah, yeah. It's been very consistent, so that's good. We're happy to see that.
Sean, do you have anything to add?
Rebecca's doing an amazing job. I couldn't have asked for anything better. I think everything else we have will be on the next agenda item, but is there any questions about the books or the book list that we provided?
There's a lot.
And that's just Battle Mountain. We'll work on Austin's list next. We got to kind of things, we got to get down there and kind of clean up things. But yeah, as far as for here, everything's running really good. Donnie and I have been going in there too, and it's just the amount of people that go in there and use the library is amazing. It's, I'm, she's doing a great job, so.
What do you attribute the increase in people traffic? I mean, what do you attribute that to?
I think that's just more programs being offered, letting more and longer hours throughout the week, and just letting them know that we're open and we're there, and we're bringing new things in.
Good.
Yeah.
Well done.
The old library system, it was only part-time, so they weren't open throughout the whole week. Facebook page and all the activities Rebecca does put out to the community is amazing, but...
Any questions? Do we have any comments from the public or... Okay. Thank you, guys. We'll move into item three. For discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove creating a library board.
So this, Ms. Waits asked for this to be on the agenda at the last meeting, so we put it on the agenda, and we're here to discuss it. I think that the idea was when we moved away from Elko was for local control and to do things like Becca is doing down there. She's, she's expanded that. Like I said, it's, it, all of the success should be pointed more towards what she's done. She's, she's putting herself out there to the community and doing us a great job. There can't be enough put on the, on the job that she's doing. I know that she's pretty bashful about giving herself credit, but, but the reality of it is, is not to take away from, from Sean or Donnie, but it's, it's right there with Rebecca, doing all the hard work and hustling. I think by creating a library board that we are, we're forfeiting that control that we, we asked to take back when we brought it from Elko County to Lander County. But that is entirely up to the commission and how you guys would like to go.
Well, I'd say, I mean, my two cents is that it's running successfully. It's trending in the right direction, and we are the board. Like you said, we have a person that's doing an outstanding job in there. I, I wouldn't see why we want to just make bigger government in creating a board. I don't see a need for that, actually. That's my two cents.
As of right now, the system is if it was questionable or that it would come before the commission, correct? I mean, if we've got literature that that's controversial, it would come, I mean, this is...
I know sometimes when you're, you're having interested people that are serving on a board like that, it's also beneficial for our staff because they can get ideas and, and, you know, talk about what's going on and, and you don't feel so alone all the time, you know, when you've got a board that's supporting you. So I just know that, that we had talked about, we were an interim board until we did something. So if you feel we're on it and we're going to stay the board, that's fine.
I, I, I mean, I like it how it is. I mean, it's going good. And again, I, I think we, we got away from that to have more local control, like Mr. Ramos said. And yeah, I just, I really don't see a reason to change it at this particular point.
I would like to know if Ms. Becca, how, how she feels. She's, she's kind of the, at the helm of this thing, and I, I haven't spoke to her about it, so maybe, maybe she feels differently. I don't know.
I agree. Yeah, I'm, I'm good to go either direction, so this sounds great and happy to work. Keep going forward.
Do you see benefit of, of a board offering you assistance?
Maybe, but it wouldn't, I wouldn't like it to be just an advisory board. I wouldn't want the control from them. But everything so far, I have plenty of assistance with Sean and Donnie. I run everything past them if it's needed, and so I think things are moving good.
And it's nice. If you ever need assistance, you can get with Bert, and we can agendize it and discuss whatever help you may need.
And so moving forward, and Becca can kick me if I misspeak, but she's been trying to educate me very quickly lately. Moving forward as this, as the library board, there will be things that will come back before you as far as policies and procedures for the library and other things like that to move towards being accredited as just a county library. But yeah, it'd be no different if you guys created a board that had the control. We'd still have to move in the same direction, but this is, moving forward as this is our library board, we're going to move forward with the same procedures that we would to make an accredited library. So, and all that stuff will be coming back before you guys as the library board to approve and disapprove policies, procedures, books, the route we go with all that, so.
Commissioners, any other questions or... Yeah, public? Kim?
Question. For Austin, what should be directing the Austin Library? Sorry, Kim shot to the record.
Okay, thank you.
We got a lot of people pretty excited about what you're doing up here.
Thank you.
Down in the south, so they're looking forward to moving forward with something.
Yes.
So I just want you guys to know that. So we've got a lot of questions. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So off of that, Sean, is the plan to put somebody in place for assistance, an assistant director down there to say position? Or how are we going to manage to give them the same services you've got now?
And without touching too much, because it's, we are now looking for a new employee down in the south, and it's being advertised right now. So once we get applicants, we'll be able to move forward with that. There are a ton of ideas, which a lot of Rebecca's ideas, on revamping the south and library down there. So once we get someone down there, and we will get, be moving forward with that as well.
Okay. Any more public comment or discussion?
Brian.
I was just going to quick mention that you apparently already know this, but a library board would be under statute anyway, would be completely independent. And you would, you know, you would give them money, and then they would disperse it. But you would not have, unlike an advisory board, like say Pluak, you would not have a veto over it or like planning or any of the others. You could set up, and I believe, I don't think it's totally precluded by the statute, you could set up some kind of an advisory board. You wouldn't call it a library board, but it, it could do the same thing if that's what you would prefer. Up to you how much bureaucracy you want to put in place.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out. That, that is correct. We would statutorily have to follow if we were to create a library board, so I think that's an important factor.
Well, and as it stands now, Ms. Commissioner, this is the library board, so it's...
Okay.
Kind of the route I'd like to see, so.
Okay, great. So I don't really think we need a motion on it, do we? If we have a consensus on it, okay.
Unless you want one.
All right. Everybody's good? Okay. We'll move on to item four.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, guys. For discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove, modify, to disapprove, modify, or negotiate the new contract terms between Lander County and AirMedCare. Do we have anybody here from AirMed on the line or... So we don't?
No, they said they would be on, on the line, but...
So basically, I mean, looking through it, the only thing that's really changed is, is that it would be argued in Nevada if there was any contest, right, rather than wherever it was.
Correct.
But I thought there was a lot of other things that we wanted changed in that contract, so why weren't those addressed?
Well, we, we're not in favor of arbitration. That is, I'm not. Let's just, I need to, you know, own up to it. This is my own personal point of view. I prefer trials, but then again, I do trials. So I'm not a big fan of arbitration. It didn't go well for us when I was DA in Eureka. Having said that, most of the world prefers arbitration, and most attorneys even prefer arbitration. It's quicker, and they think of it as being less expensive. I worry that, especially a large company like this, because they're, they're so, of course, they've also got talented lawyers. But because they are so talented, they're very, very good at selecting arbitrators and maneuvering the arbitration to go in their favor. But having said that, again, it is a large company, and they're not likely to get off of that. It's going to be something that will keep reoccurring. But my standing advice is where possible, you should probably avoid arbitration.
Okay. Oh, Mike, do you have a question?
Yes. Thank, thank you. You might have to turn that up and see. He is on the line. I guess he's speaking. Somebody can hear him on the other side, but...
Well, we're all the way up here. Can you hear us?
What about the little black box, Brian? Is that...
Yeah, they're, they're midway. Is this...
Yeah, he's talking because I can see his speaker going.
Are you there? Hello?
He can hear us, but for some reason, we cannot hear him. He emailed me.
I've asked Michelle to speak. Was she cursed?
I hear him on handset.
They can hear him in Austin. Fine, it's just not coming through here for some reason.
We can hear him through the handset, but we can't hear it through the speaker.
Oh, really? We may have to take a five-minute break and try.
Okay, so we're going to call a five-minute break, and anybody that can hear us on the phone, we're going to try to... So we'll pick up where we left off. We're discussing the approval, disapproval, or modification or to negotiate the new contract terms between Lander County and AirMedCare. So some of the questions, or one of the questions I had, Jason, was I seen the, the thing that was changed is where we would take up if there was any disagreements, and we see that it was moved to Nevada, which is a good thing. But I know there was a lot of discussion on other things that we would like to have seen, but I don't see where they were changed in the contracts.
Can you refer specific examples? There was one off of the email that was sent to me asking for the arbitration location and the state laws in Nevada to be amended, and we modified those to those requirements. The other communication was regarding questions pertaining to the contract. I didn't notice any modification request.
Bert, you want to take that?
Do you want me to?
Yeah, go for it.
I don't know if Jason can hear me or not. Basically, the highlighted email that Bert sent was actually basically stating that all of those sections in those paragraphs were new, new paragraphs. From the original contract that we originally started with AirMed to the contract that we just approved last time, there's basically a page and a half of paragraphs that are completely new.
And Commissioner, I believe that email is in your guys' backup that I color-coded when I had... Okay.
Let's try it.
Okay, we got it. Hold on.
Okay, hold on one second, Jason.
Muted. Unmuted.
Okay, our system's working, so I don't know if you want him to jump back on or continue.
Well, let's make sure he's...
They're, they're...
So Jason, can you just call back on the original number? We've got our system working now, so everybody can hear. Okay, thank you. Okay. Are you there, Jason?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we got you there, Jason.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, so what were you saying, Jason, when we last talked to you?
On February sixteenth, I responded to the email with the highlighted items, providing clarity on the indicated parts of the contract, that there were questions regarding to liability and claims and any way of recovery. Big shout-out also includes neither the providers nor MCM will be responsible for payment for services provided by another air ambulance service. I'm just making sure that everybody is privy to that response.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
You know, I'm, I'm really okay with it. I really am, and I think we should just give it one more go. We'll see how many we're, we're actually handling this year and take a look at it very seriously. If we're not having the numbers, then we'll look at it again. But the biggest thing that our previous DA had was the fact of arbitration. Although that's very, very minimal that we would probably ever go there, but at least they changed it for us. And so they're doing what they can, and so I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve of the contact with AirMedCare.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there any, and a second, is there any public comment on or public discussion? Commissioners, anybody in the audience? Kim?
So I'm not sure, sorry, Kim shot. Lander County MS. I'm not sure if I got that correctly. So was the comment that the new highlight? The new highlighted area stated that if they were not available, they would send another air ambulance and to the people's expense? Is that what the comment was? No.
No.
So how, how does that work? If we call AirMedCare and they are unavailable and they send, say, medics or something like that, is that still covered under our...
No.
No.
So that's a problem for 911? So that's a problem for nine-one-ones. I mean, I don't know how it works at the hospital, but that is a problem for the nine-one-ones in Lander County.
Yeah, but we cannot.
And those.
We cannot handle that under this contract item in any case. But yeah, to, to answer your question, this is only with this carrier.
Okay. I think it's a waste of money.
Well, that was, that was somewhat of my concern, is that we're paying seventy thousand dollars to real- I mean, this is a very confusing topic for me, is I don't know if we're necessarily gaining anything from our seventy thousand dollars, if we just. I mean, what are we gaining? What are we paying for, other than, because our, our citizens are still gonna be covered with, uh, what is it, the no, uh?
No surprise act.
Thank you, no surprise act.
Well, not, not if, if AirMed does it. I mean, this way, we have coverage with two companies, and if our citizens want to be covered by everybody, they can buy an individual membership with, uh, CareFlight, and they'd be covered with anybody that's gonna pick them up, so. Um, I kn- I know we went through this when we started a couple of years ago, and I, I, I think the numbers were there and, and way more of what they paid, of what we saved for our people than.
And we do have MedX one here, if you guys have questions for them as well.
Sure, yeah. Kim?
What is the other?
I'm not so available to address the no surprise act.
Excuse me, Jason, excuse me.
You'd be interested in hearing that.
Excuse me, we have somebody that has the floor.
So we're covered by two companies, is that what you said? That being CareFlight, the fixed wing only, correct? I just wanna make sure that we're correct with that, because if CareFlight under this contract, the way it stood before was only the fixed wing.
That's my understanding still. We're only covered by AirMed and the fixed wing.
Yeah, which, the numbers are pretty low that we use that fixed wing. CareFlight rotors, we do often use in the south, because geographically, that's the best option, and, um, that is not covered under this contract, which does nobody any good in our area, so just, just saying.
Please withhold to the fact that you think it's a waste of money, this seventy thousand.
I hold to the fact, yeah. I, I, well, I'm a little confused. I don't know what the money's for.
Yeah, I, I as well, so it's, uh, sir, would you care to come up then?
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, Jacob Dalsra, for the, uh, for the record, uh, I've, I've approached the Commission a couple of times, and our position remains the same, and, and I agree with Kim. Uh, I do feel that this is a, a waste of money for the citizens of, of Lander County. Um, and, uh, I, I urge you guys to consider not renewing this contract. And please understand that, that your citizens will still be co- they'll still be transported to where they need to go, regardless of this, of this contract or not. Um, and like, like you said, Commissioner, if somebody wants to go and individually go, get covered, that could, they could do that on their own terms. So, thank you for your time.
So, so, just, so, I'm sure there's, uh, citizens out there that have the questions. So if we don't, we pay seventy thousand dollars, they know they're covered, they, you know, I don't know, they, they get a little membership card or whatever. We don't, if we don't pay the seventy thousand dollars, are they necessarily, are they losing anything? What are they losing?
Um, I would say that MedX Air One does the majority of the transports out of this county. Um, and, uh, if somebody doesn't have the, if they end up do getting transported by Air Care Network, um, and they, uh, don't have insurance, uh, there's, there's a possibility that they could be put into a bad position. But be, because of Medicaid, um, and, uh, e- even Air Care Network's program has a program where if somebody really doesn't have the ability to pay, they're gonna work with them. And so I, I personally think that there's very little benefit for the citizens of Lander County to renew this contract.
So basically, that seventy thousand dollars would avoid that, that bad situation that could arise if we didn't pay the seventy thousand dollars.
Right, but like what Kim's saying is that there's other carriers that come into here, and you're not protecting them. And so like what Kim, like Kim said, that if, uh, CareFlight comes, there, i- it's not gonna protect me. You're only protecting a very small amount of people that, uh, could be transported by this agency. And like I said, the vast majority of people that do get transported out of this county is either done by MedX Air One or by, uh, CareFlight out of Reno.
Well, we did ask for the numbers, um, and, and they, there was still quite a few. I mean, like I said, way more than we saved people than the seventy thousand dollars when we looked at it. So I think we should just at least continue in more year and look at it really, really carefully and see. And if the numbers aren't there for us, then we can pull it.
I agree with that.
I, I would ask if there's not, so I do remember back at the Austin, um, meeting when Tim, our insurance guy, came, and he said, "The bottom line is, everybody should be insured."
Yeah.
And I'm just wondering if there's a count- something the county could do to make sure that they could assist these people in getting insurance, whether it be Medicaid, Medicare, or whatever, if there was an assistance program, in which I think we have, somebody that can assist these people getting online, getting the program set up, and everybody being insured. Because bottom line, everybody should be insured, and if you are insured, it's gonna be covered. They're gonna bill your insurance.
Bottom, bottom line is not everybody is insured.
That's my point.
I mean, and not everybody is on Medicare, and not everybody's on Medicaid.
Right.
So if you're not sixty-five years old, and here you are in an average, and you're not working for a company, um, that actually covers you with any kind of a group health, then I, I know there's a lot of people that were uninsured in Kingston, and they were pretty happy when, when we, we actually got this straightened out for them last year.
When we paid that money for them, yes, so, um, that, that's kinda my question is, so the, to the county's expense, we covered that because of the contract or whatever fell through. But, um, what exactly is this covering, just for the small amount of people that we don't have that are insured? Because like you said, if we get that person that is truly not insured, for whatever reason, if they are not employed or whatever, there is indigent funds that can cover that, and they can apply for. I don't understand, I just don't understand where this seventy thousand dollars is going to, eh, to make it fair. You know, 'cause I, I, I think that's a lot of money. That, that has increased significantly from the, um, contracts that we had in the past, and what has changed? What benefit has changed to these people?
And the other thing I would say is the other, uh, providers in there are not coming to the Commission and asking for seventy thousand dollars. There's only one, there's only one group that's asking for that, and it's the group that probably does the least amount of transports out of this county.
Well, the main thing that's changed is the gas prices. And I think we know that.
So why wouldn't we pay Med, why wouldn't we split that up between all of, all three of our air companies? CareFlight, MedX, and, um, um, AirMedCare, and have every one of our flights that provide service for us? Why wouldn't we be doing that? I don't understand, um. I understand the gas prices, but when we call a flight and MedX shows up,
Right.
I di- I just don't understand.
No, your comment was, "I don't understand why, why the price went up," was, was your comment.
Oh. I would get that, but why aren't we pay- so did theirs. So did MedX and CareFlights.
And they're not charging the seventy thousand.
And they're dr- charging the county seventy thousand dollars to respond. Is my deal. And, and the bottom line is, is if AirMedCare is not available, they are going to, in turn, if we were to call them first, they are going to, in turn, dispatch out MedX, which in turn is not gonna be covered under that contract. That's the bottom line. If they do not have a resource available, they're either, either gonna call MedX or CareFlight or some other company out and about, and it's still gonna be the citizen's expense. So I, I'm thoroughly confused.
Uh, Jason, did you have, uh, something that you wanted to communicate?
Uh, I certainly do. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of our company. Uh, there's a couple of things I'd like to address, first and foremost. The price, uh, went up from the previous, a couple of years ago agreement, 'cause we expanded the coverage to the full network coverage. So the AirMedCare network providers are across the entire United States, including Alaska and Hawaii. So your effective coverage for your residents of the county is not just within Lander County. It, it's across over three hundred and twenty bases, based out of thirty-eight states, completing over one hundred and thirty-six thousand transports annually. The membership concept, what it does is it's a prepaid option that eliminates any and all out-of-pocket costs associated with any of our providers transporting a patient, regardless of their insurance level. So this includes your, your uninsured residents, uh, your underinsured residents, your government-insured residents, and your commercially insured residents. What the No Surprise Act specifically does, is the No Surprise Act forces an insurance carrier to apply in-network rates to out-of-network providers. So if we're not in-network with, for example, Blue Cross Blue Shield in Nevada, it would force that insurance plan to apply in-network rates. What it does not do is it does not eliminate any of the cost-sharing obligations that are defined in the benefit plan. So your copays, your coinsurance, and your deductible limits still apply, and those can be substantial financial impacts on a patient when they're transported. For example, I did, you know, extensive research since we started these conversations, and it showed just previously, you can grab the benefit guide, and you can go in there and look at the coinsurance requirements, even at an in-network rate can be ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty percent of the bill that is the patient's responsibility. The county leadership choosing to continue the relationship with AirMedCare Network is eliminating that by purchasing the seventy thousand dollar membership plan, covering all residents within the county. If any of our providers transport them, regardless of what the benefit plan says, we are going to write off those copays, coinsurance, and deductible requirements to include up to the entire transport bill if it's an uninsured resident. In addition to that, medically necessary denials are very common in the transport business. All carriers face these. Uh, what will happen is that is considered an adverse benefit determination, which the benefit plan can deny it, and therefore not be covered by the No Surprise Act, putting the patient in a position where they could be responsible for the entire bill. This membership program relating to any of our providers transporting will eliminate the entire cost of that bill, meaning the patient will owe zero. So that's the concept of membership, is membership is designed to have prepaid funds in lieu of cost-sharing obligations, because any provider cannot just routinely waive these, because it could be considered beneficiary inducement. So there's very complicated, complex laws that are in place to make sure a provider that offers a service on the airside and the membership side remain compliant, and that's what we've done for thirty-seven years. What we're offering to the county is a guarantee in writing, unlike, you just heard, a verbal comment. We're putting it in writing what the financial outcome is going to be for any of your residents that are transported by any of our providers, considering and assuming that this agreement remains in place.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a response?
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jason. Kim, did you have something?
Yeah, um, I, I'm still, I, and I get that, and that is a great program. If they were our highest rate of flights going out of Lander County.
Yeah, so you're saying they're not. What, so what was it, we had those numbers? Do we remember what the percentage was? You, Kim?
No, I, I know that we have flown thirty-three flights, um, out of the airport last year that I know of. Um, two were CareFlight, and one was Reach, and the rest were MedX. Just in my area. I mean, that's what I can attest to. And then that's not including the scene flights that we do. Um, and I don't know what the hospital does or whatever, but.
So basically, the seventy thousand dollars is going to help anybody who's uninsured, and it's going to help if they're in another state.
Mm-hmm.
Those are, those are the benefits that I can see by signing a contract and paying seventy thousand dollars.
It's also gonna help those that are insured.
It also removes all the coinsurance requirements.
Because there's still deductible and coinsurance that's pretty expensive, um, and that would be picked up too.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Michael Harris. I'm the Director of EMS here in Lander County. So I actually pulled the numbers a little bit ago, beginning of twenty twenty-two to the second month of twenty-three. Reach had thirty-one flights, um, MedX had a little over sixty. We had five other agencies come in. Nineteen of those flights with Reach were Lander County residents that were insured. Eleven were non-Lander County residents. They ended up in our county, and we flew them from here. And then one person was uninsured from Lander County, so those are the numbers.
Yeah, so that's my concern, is that, you know, it's, it's, it's not your money, it's not my money, it's taxpayers' money. And it's like, we have to be responsible to know that we're spending that money for the best benefit of the citizens of our county. And that's where I'm kind of, I'm kind of, you know, 'cause if it, if it benefits two or three people, and it's really a disservice to everybody else by spending that kind of money, then it's not the right thing to do. And that's, that's kinda where I hung up on the issue.
So I, I just wanna make a couple of comments. Regardless, even, even with both these companies, um, it's still very difficult to get a flight in here. There's so much volume coming out of Elko, Eureka, Winamucca. Um, this doesn't guarantee us a flight at any point in time. Uh, it doesn't mean that we're not gonna get the service, uh, either. Um, it's important to keep both of these companies in the air. Uh, I just don't know if this is the right way to do it.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's a, it's, Kim shot, I think it's important to keep all of our resources providing for us. And, and that's kinda where I'm getting at. I don't have a problem with Reach. I just don't know why we're not supporting MedX as well, because that is our majority of flights. Um, and I have no personal, I mean, I have personal experience with MedX, and I will say that my husband was blown out with MedX and has not received a bill.
Reach is our second-largest carrier here, so they, they do the majority of our second flights out of here. That's important. And we are, no, I'm not up here endorsing MedX. Let me be very clear. I'm not endorsing either flight agency. I think they're both important to keep up in the air. Like I said, it's, it's hard. Even, you know, even recently with the weather, it's been twelve, sixteen hours before we can get a flight from anybody, and, and that's just the nature of the business.
Well, thank you, and I think it's important that we're getting comments from on the ground, you know, as you see it, because that's, that's a benefit to you. I mean, you guys have a different reality than what we have up here, so.
So, so speaking back to the winter months, I mean, guaranteed, if we have weather, we are not getting a flight in Austin. I mean, every once in a while, somebody will accept, but as we, i- it is not safe to call a flight. So therefore, us driving to an area where a flight can't get in, and that's a lot of the things that we're doing when we get on a call. I'm looking at the weather north, I'm looking at the weather south, east, and west, and we don't have a choice but to call CareFlight if we have to head west. And that's not in our contract, you know, if the fix- the rotors are not in our contract. So if that, I've stated that before, I don't, eh, I, they, I had been told numerous times by this company that they would have the rotors on that list, and we would be covered by the rotors as well, 'cause that's the majority of CareFlight that we use.
I'd say this money may be better suited putting into your local resources in your own backyard that are there to respond with that.
Would you clarify for me again, though? You said we had, what, of the ones in twenty-three?
Yeah, so I pulled.
We have eleven that were uninsured?
No, um, we had a total of thirty-one flights from our, um, charting database. That was nineteen residents from Lander County that were insured, eleven that we flew out of here that were non-residents, and then one that was uninsured.
And Commissioners, can I say one more thing, too? I- if you choose not to renew this contract, individuals still can go and choose to sign up for Air Care Network on their own. Um, and so i- if somebody said, "Look, I don't have insurance. This is a, this is a great way to protect myself and my family if I do have to be transported out of Lander County," they're, they can go and do that and pay for that on, on their own terms.
Can, can I ask him a question with Reach? If we do not have this contract, and somebody was to call AirMedCare and say, "I do not have insurance. Can I pay for a membership?" Does that go through?
Who are you asking that question to?
Uh, to Jason. Or is it only a thing?
Yes, yes, the consumer can purchase the membership. It'll be at, uh, a substantially higher rate for the household. So it'll be at si- seventy-nine dollars per household if they're a senior, six-year-old or primary member, or ninety-nine dollars per household, uh, if they're a non-senior primary member. So if you look at the population count, and you look at the seventy thousand dollars based on the volume we're covering, they're getting a substantial discount, because all your residents are not just covered in Lander County, they're covered across the entire lower forty-eight, Alaska, and Hawaii.
I get, so I missed that first part. So if we do not renew this contract, and the citizens of Lander County call you, and they want a membership, if they do not have insurance, will you let them purchase the membership?
Absolutely.
And then there is absolutely no cost to them?
Well, the, the cost, they'll have to purchase it individually as a consumer at the seventy-nine dollar or ninety-nine dollar rate per household.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So, I mean, if I, I still stand where I stand on it. I, I don't think it's necessarily the best way to spend seventy thousand dollars. Um, you have, you have testimony, uh, from boots on the ground that actually work it, live it every single day. Um, and I agree with Mr. Harris. Um, and I agree with Mr. Harris that these dollars could be better utilized, and I don't know how. We could brainstorm, and, I mean, I don't know if there's assistance for people who are underinsured, or if we can use Indigent, uh, fund money for that, but, uh, as a whole, I don't, I don't think it's the best thing in the interest of the majority of Lander County citizens. So, uh, we'll leave it at that. Uh, we have a motion from Patsy. Did you second that, JR?
No, I'm backing out of that one.
Okay, so...
Commissioner, um, so something else for consideration. In, in nineteen twenty, we paid sixty-five hundred dollars for this contract. And then, and then it went to sixty-six thousand because we, we expanded the, the REACH. Um, so I don't know if you guys would want to consider keeping it, you know, to downsizing that contract if that's something that still stands with the, with them kind of numbers, or if, or if that's expanded or not, and, uh, and then I, I'm also kind of in agreeance with, with the boots on the ground. I mean, we've, we've paid seventy thousand dollars for, for one flight this last year is, is ultimately what it costs, but I think anybody that didn't have insurance and seen that bill comes through the door, it comes through the door at a lot more than that seventy thousand dollar fee. Um, that's, I guess, why you guys have...
Seventy thousand dollars to the person that don't have it to pay for the, for the membership is, needs to be considered due home to seventy thousand. I think we look at this heavy over the next year, but, Patsy, I'm nervous that this is, uh, challenging the fact that it's a service that I think needs to be provided.
Well, that's the thing, Mike, is that I agree with you, but we're not losing that service based on what they're saying. The service is still there. People are still going to get flown out. It's just, what are we spending the money for? What is it actually getting us? And that's what I'm saying, is it's not getting us, it's not, I don't think it's beneficial. Uh, we had a comment? Yeah.
Yeah, I want to have a question for the record. Uh, so I'd like to ask a question of, of Jason and, and everybody on the board here.
So I'm an uninsured resident of Nevada, and I'm riding a horse, and I get bucked off and I break my back, and I need some help. Okay? I'm an uninsured, insured resident of Lander County, Nevada, and this happened to me in, in jarbage. Okay? So, so I don't have air insurance. How would this apply to me?
When do you have any insurance?
Is that a question for me?
Uh, I'm asking a question.
It's a hypothetical.
I have no Medicare, I have no insurance.
Not hypothetical, is you have no insurance.
I have no insurance. How would this affect me? What would this seventy thousand dollars as a taxpayer of Lander County do for me?
We would write off the entire bill, and you would owe zero.
For one flight?
And save you the bill.
And it'd save me the bill.
For any and all flight.
Not all flights, if it's under the Air Med Care Network. Sorry, Kim shot for the record. If it's under the Air Med Care Network, then it would cover him. Whatever flight is closest to you is who they're going to utilize if you're in jarbage. And if it is under the Air Med Care Network...
But, but, but the seventy thousand dollars that this county is spending, he just got on here and he said that it affects, affects Lander County residents, whether we be in Alaska, Hawaii, or anywhere in the lower forty-eight of the United States, including Alaska and Hawaii. So if he's taking this, so if we have this contract and he's not available with this contract and him not being available, does he pay for the next flight that comes along? Or am I stuck with that bill?
You're stuck with it, correct.
Yeah, so it's only if, if Air Med Care applies you out. And that's the point, that's what they're saying, is that the majority of flights are not...
Correct, but I think there's a lot of confusion that, that's expelled through the audience and through the phone lines that's not getting made clear. And so I wanted to make that clear.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a, it's a network plan, so it only covers, you know, participating providers. And to address your point specifically on the, the legal style of it, reciprocity is not allowed for the officer of the inspector general. So we can only agree to write off, uh, transports that would be, you know, funds generated from us providing a service. If we didn't provide a service, we can't write off the services.
Right, thank you. All right, so we have a motion. Did we have a second?
Yes.
So, and Mike seconded, uh, to, for renewal of the contract. Um, so all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those who pay say nay? Nay. JR, did you vote yea or nay? Nay, so...
Doesn't pass.
Doesn't pass. So, okay, guys, we're going to take a five-minute break. We'll call the meeting back.
Unmuted. This conference will now be recorded.
All right, we'll call the meeting back to order. Uh, we'll go to item five, for discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the unreimbursed fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two funds for Lander County Conservation District in amount not to exceed seventy-four thousand five hundred and ninety-six dollars and nine cents, and to be taken from the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three grant.
So Commissioner, I think is what we have going on here is when we went back and, uh, and looked at some of the funding to the Conservation District, and we hadn't had any of them draw, or reimbursements, um, placed, that, uh, brought to light that them reimbursements hadn't been done for a couple of years, and the reason being is there was some staff changing. And, uh, in the, in the change, there was a mix-up that they didn't know that, how to put in that reimbursement, or that they were supposed to, I should say, put in that reimbursement. Uh, so this is just, uh, clearing that back up so they can be back to square on their side, um, using this year's funds for previous year's projects.
Okay, so if I'm reading it correctly, it was a total of seventy-four five ninety-six oh nine for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. And then eighty-nine five forty-seven eighty-nine up until to date. And then, how, what's, how, how am I supposed to read the second page, Lakin?
Lakin Sullivan for the record. So I did the math because I was a little confused as well. The second page is totaling the first page and the second page to get the eighty-nine.
The eighty-nine or the ninety-five?
Um...
Or is that, ninety-five is what they have left to spend?
She, it says county total available.
That's what it said, yeah.
They, these are very confusing.
Maybe, maybe, maybe Anna can speak to this.
Anna Vina-Gradavam, the secretary for...
Morning, Anna.
So the first page was the twenty-one, twenty-two that was not reimbursed, and then the second page is so far this year, what we have spent of county funds.
And that's the, that's the eighty-nine thousand or the ninety-five?
The ninety-five is total, so that's totaling the operating, the chemical, and the wildlife, because we do the three grants.
So ninety-five is what is...
The ninety-five is what we have available to reimburse from this year.
Oh, I see, okay.
So I'm asking if we can take, yeah, what wasn't reimbursed and just take it out of that?
Okay, so you have...
So that it's not new funding.
Right, so you have ninety-five thousand that can be used to reimburse?
Yes.
Oh, and what, so, and then that eighty-nine thousand is just a total of what has been spent, correct?
Hmm.
Is that right?
No, no. It's a total...
I'm confused by the last number.
Yeah, sorry. I'm still working on a process of how to... So, um, what has been spent is in these totals. So under operating fifty-two, um, nineteen and eighty-two cents has been spent, and then so far in the, uh, weed chemical, fourteen thousand has been spent, and then ten thousand has been spent in the wildlife.
Oh, no, okay.
Sorry, yeah, they're not really lined up yet, I'm working on a...
I see my misreading, that was very clear now. So it's like ninety-five is a total of all three of those.
Yeah, and I don't, yeah.
And then that, okay, I got it.
So I guess my only comment is, um, this is totaling what they have to s- left over to spend for all three grants, but they get three separate grants for three different things. And the first two for the, um, if we were to pay both last fiscal year twenty-two and this current year twenty-three for their, um, operating, which they only get six thousand for, we'd be paying eleven thousand one sixty-five twenty-four. So that would be over what they have for this year. Same with their weed, they get twenty thousand for weed control, and if we pay both years, we'd be paying thirty-three thousand one ninety-six fifty. The amount that they have available is in their sage grouse, which is the biggest one, and they get a hundred thousand for that. So the sage grouse is going to make up that overage on the other two grants. I just wanted you guys to be aware, because it's three separate grants.
So the funding, the funding is available within their, within their lines, however, they have to combine a few of their lines to make the difference.
So if I heard you right, we're spending sage grouse money to pay operation costs?
That's what we would be doing, yes.
And just so the commission is aware, this is, uh, these are funds that would have been spent for operation costs had that been done in the proper budget year, but since we're missing a budget year, we're just trying not to, um, exceed their budget this year and still write the, the missed.
Well, that's the point. The, the board has been very clear in the grant money that we've, that we've given to these other organizations that is, needs to be spent in accordance to what the agreement has made with the commission. So it's just, I would just caution that we keep it on that line.
Yeah.
Uh, sage grouse money is for sage grouse, not to pay office expenses or anything else, so it's, it's, uh...
So for the current year, they have a hundred and twenty-six thousand available in all, with all three, and with this ask for last year and this year, we'd be paying a hundred and four thousand six thirty-six oh two. So they do have the money to cover it. I just wanted you guys to be clear that...
No, that's fine, I appreciate that, so it's, uh... Okay, um, or do we have any questions? Any questions from the audience? Okay. We have a motion?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the unreimbursement of fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two funds for Lander County Conservation District in the amount not to exceed seventy-four thousand five hundred and ninety-six dollars and nine cents, to be taken from the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three grant.
Okay, JR made the motion, you have a second? Mike, uh, seconded, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, nay? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good night's day.
You're welcome.
We'll move into item six, for discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the agreement with Sky Fiber Internet for services of the Battle Mountain and Austin Library. This agreement is for fiscal year twenty-four and is required for Lander County to receive the E-rate funding for the library internet services.
Lakin Sullivan for the record. So with Holly's help, we were able to get, um, this E-rate, uh, application done. Um, I have to have this signed, uh, quote agreement for Sky Fiber to the E-rate, um, company by, I don't know, it's like the end of this month, so that's why it's before you guys now. And it will reduce our bill. We're paying about one thousand eight ninety-eight a month right now for the, the fiber internet at the two library locations, and it will bring it down to about six hundred a month with the E-rate funding.
Nice, wow, there's a savings.
Um, real quick, it has no early-out clause, um, and it has no dispute...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
There's no early-out clause, and there's no dispute resolution clause in this, just so you're aware of that. Um, it's a three-year, I think, the three-year contracts. So, I mean, I just want you to be aware of that, that's all.
Right.
Normally, we wouldn't prefer that.
Thirty-day out and...
Yeah.
And just to be, just so everybody knows, the reason that it does not have that is because it is the reduced rate, and so you sign up for that extended period of time to get your reduced rate. Um, and it's kind of like a, a joint of a bunch of other people that are in the same system, so you can get the reduced rate. So you, you fall into a pool more or less. Okay. Okay. Any questions?
Sounds like a pretty good deal.
Yeah. Uh, we have public comment on it, discussion? Okay, all here a motion?
I'll motion to approve the agreement with Sky Fiber Internet Services for the Battle Mountain and Austin Library for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-four.
Okay.
And receive the rate funding for the library internet services.
Okay, Mike made the motion. We have a second. JR seconded, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. We'll move into item seven, for discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the renewal of the contract for Pitt and Burdick CPAs and advisors, auditors for the Lander County, uh, for the fiscal year twenty-two, three, and twenty-two, four.
Lakin Sullivan for the record, this is just a renewal. We usually do this with them every two years, and we need it renewed for our next year's audit.
They can meet your deadlines and...
Yeah, I have no complaints. They, they've been great. I don't know about, um, any other departments, but as far as I go, I'm, I'm good.
Real quick, on, on the contract, um, they, they've got a, I think, overall excellent dispute resolution clause, because it talks about what I always like to see. The parties are supposed to sit down and negotiate with each other. You know, if they start to have a dispute and do it in good faith. Um, it ends, though, of course, with an arbitration clause, but you're unlikely to get them to come off of it, and you've had that before, so whatever. Um, the other problem, of course, is they, the documentation belongs to the auditors, not to us, but my understanding is that's normal, because the government, um, has to be able to look at that stuff even when we don't want them to. The auditors are under obligation to let the government look over things. And so the auditors are not going to release the documentation and have the ownership be to us, and then be liable to us for, you know, revealing stuff. Um, they will not reveal, their, their ethics require that they not reveal things unless they're required to, but of course, you get a subpoena from federal court or whatever, the FBI, um, you're going to do what you've got to do.
And the amount for the two fiscal years, just so you guys are aware, is on, I think it'd be page seven, they don't have page numbers, but it's under other, I don't know if you guys seen that. It's eighty-five thousand for, um, FY twenty-three and eighty-seven thousand five fifty for FY twenty-four.
I think we've been, um, we've been very pleased with, with the way the audits come out, of course, but I mean, are you folks pleased with the way that they, they do it and, and, and everything? Because, I mean, is it our fiduciary responsibility to go out and actually have people bid on it?
Well, this would be a professional service, so per interest outside of the scope.
Right, but I mean, do we have a responsibility to at least look at what's out there once in a while? I mean, I remember when we changed last time, um, and I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't hurt to go out and ask.
And that's completely up to you guys. We just have to designate our auditors to the Department of Taxation by this month, so if there's, if that's something you would want to do, we probably want to have to do for the next...
I'm, I'm, I'm okay. I mean, I, 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 I like the, they've done a good job, it appears, but I'm saying, isn't it something for us to think about? I mean, you don't just, just take the things over and over and over, I mean...
So I, I have two comments on it. There's number one, it's per interest, it is a, it is a service item, right? That's my first comment. So we are within the scope of the law. Secondly, is, I don't know if we necessarily, it's, it's a service point, so that, I was glad to have you ask that question, are they happy with them? Because that's, that's what matters, are they happy with them?
No, we, we are not mandated to go out to bid, but, but is it, is it our responsibility to look to see what, what the competitive prices are out there?
So, I'm not necessarily, that's the thing with service, uh, facilities, is that I don't think it's necessarily going with the cheapest is the best, because this is a very important thing they're providing to our county, and they've been, they've scrutinized to make sure that, because that is right, we're, we're fiducially responsible, and it's like, I want to make sure that we have a solid auditing firm that has our back. So to say that we save so much by going with this firm, I don't know if that's necessarily the right thing to do, because you might be saving a little bit, but what are you losing in service? That's the point, and I think that's why it's set up the way it is, is we don't deal with day-to-day operations, they do. They see the service aspect that we don't necessarily see.
Okay, so how did we happen to change last time?
That was before me, I don't know.
I, if, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken...
We have been with them for a long, long time.
Yes, and if I'm not mistaken, Patsy, if I recall correctly, there were some issues. There, Bill, do you remember back? Because I think it was in that two thousand seven, two thousand ten frame, I think we changed or right after, but I thought it was a, it was a service issue. There was something that happened, if I remember correctly.
It was, but I don't think it was these guys, I think it was...
No, it wasn't these guys.
Yeah.
No, we, we, this is who we went to, and it was in seventeen, sixteen, seventeen?
Yes, there were some issues, but they also split from that department as well, and, um, when
There was a, there was a break in the service.
Gaborian shut down, they all split into different areas.
Yes, that's where it was. Yes, thank you. That's, that's exactly correct, so. Um, so anyway, that was, that's my two cents.
Well, I, I certainly agree with you. I don't think that, you know, you're going, the least expensive is always the brightest thing to do on any kind of a contract. That's why we look, but, um, if we don't have to. But I'm just saying, maybe it's something we should be looking at, maybe next year or something.
Okay.
So, keep it in mind.
Okay, thanks, Patsy. Um, do we have a motion?
I motion to approve the renewal of con- of Pitt and Burdock's con- CPA contract for Lander County for the fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four.
Okay, and we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by JR. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass these unanimously. We'll go to eight. For discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the updated county policy and procedures and credit card agreement for Lander County credit card users.
Um, Lake and Sullivan for the record, so myself, Liz, and Juicy, we got together and we came up with a new, um, policy based on what we talked about. So I don't remember what meeting it was, but, um, that's all in here for you guys' review. If there's anything that you see that you don't like or you want changed, then we can do that.
I'll go first. Thank you. This looks very well. Eight is one of the points I, I would like to discuss. It's if you can't get a fuel receipt. Uh, if it ain't at the, and if it ain't at the machine, you can go into pretty much any gas station and get it. So I disagree. I, I, I don't like that one. I just, I think it's something that you, you provide the receipt to, you get it.
And we left that one on there, because this is one that the board added last time when we did the agreement, because we weren't getting anything, so that's completely up to you guys.
So I, I, I do agree with Mike, that it's not available, because it just annoys me.
It, it is.
When it says, go to the clerk to get your receipt, I'm like, man, are you kidding me? Make your machines work. But bottom line is this, they can walk in, they can get a receipt, so there's no reason they should ever fuel up and not have a receipt.
In, in our discussion on the last time, I, I liked everything else. The only thing I seen missed that I would like to address is that tax exempt card. Because it said that we, we discussed it, you know, we're paying ta- you know, if you don't use it, then we pay taxes. There's no reason that they're getting it from the, it goes out with the department head, correct? Is that kind of what we talked about? We have several of them.
So like ma- so like adding an item that says that if they're purchasing online for something, their, their account has to be taxed then?
Any purchases, because they're responsible for, or they know the number for Walmart or anything.
Did we not put that?
To take advantage of that, so there's no discussion on if not, I would like it written in, or the legalities of it, uh, council. Is that responsibilities for you to pay?
Yeah, I completely agree.
If you don't take advantage of the tax exempt status of the county.
I know we talked about that the last meeting, but we might have missed that, put it in there, but yeah, they should be, they should not be paying tax on their purchases.
So can we write that into this?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can, yeah, it's just.
And a quick clarification on yours. I mean, I, you're used to all these twenty-four-hour places, but, um, our gas stations are not open twenty-four hours a day. And so, um, and in fact, one of the times when I went after a receipt, you know, I hit the button and got the receipt, and I didn't even think anything of it, and I got that back to the office and it's blank. Really? I mean, fortunately, they were open, and I did go back and get a receipt, but I'm saying, I, I didn't look at it when it came out. You know, you push the receipt and you take it and go. Um, so don't forget, um, sometimes you might have to write everything in.
So I guess they're, they're, it's writ- they've got that, they've got that covered in that piece. I guess that'll be the exception, but if that becomes the norm, then I think, you know.
I, I can write a section in there that says, with the exception only unless you tried to get a receipt inside or at the pump. We can add like a clause to that, to where it covers.
But you've already got it, if possible. And. Okay, it's writ- I said, they wrote it in there. It's, well, I like it. It, it's an excellent job. It's exactly what I feel we talked about that day. We get it. You, you want to save money and you want documentation. I think you've said that loud and clear in here, but if you, if you straightjacket it worse, I don't know. I'm already, personally, I'm already to the point where I'm going to use my own personal credit card. I have no intention of using a county credit card. And then I'll go for reimbursement, and if I don't get it, well, frankly, I get paid enough anyway to heck with it.
Well, again, I just say, it's, it's easy to spend other people's money. If it were my money, tighter the controls I would like, so it's, it's, uh, I agree with what Mike said, had said, so.
That's all I have, right?
Yes.
So what do you want us to do with eight?
Um, I, I like the suggestions that were made. The, the tax exemption, that they need to be providing a tax exemption card. We shouldn't be paying sales tax, and that there needs to be a receipt for gas.
So take out.
If there's any, if there's a, if there's a situation, like, like Patsy said, it's after hours you can't, then it comes to us.
Then I can leave the other, okay.
Yeah, but we, we make them accountable for it. So if they don't have it, they would come to us to say, this is, we don't have it, and this is why we don't have it. But again, it's, it's a level of oversight that I think we need when we're spending taxpayers' dollars.
And are you guys okay with, um, fourteen? We, we kind of put that in there based on, because we've kind of had issues with that already.
No, I, I like that. I like that limit. Be- before the weather.
But you guys are okay with people coming before you to, to request an increase on their limit?
I guess I'm trying to think, why would we need an increase on a credit card out over twenty-five hundred dollars? I mean, it, it should be for incidentals, travel. Any major purchase should, should be done PO or, I, I don't, I don't understand that.
In the past, the purchases that, like, for example, the chucker feed, things like that, when they'd go out of town to purchase a bunch of these things, but, um, this is my personal opinion. Um, I think that a lot of that stuff could be done at local businesses.
Well, that was, I've pre-staffed for years. It should be done locally.
Yeah, and so I, I don't know. I think that if it does come, I think that that is very appropriate to come back before you guys, so it is.
Because it, it puts Juicy in a tough situation, because she's already had someone ask for an increase from the twenty-five hundred, and, and she's, you know, so this way, we thought, you guys decide if, if they get that increase.
Didn't we put that she could do it twice, and then anything outside of that, or no?
Yeah, well, we put that they could have a temporary limit increase, um, twice a year, so if you raise, like, if, so say for, for chucker tournament, if they need an increase, then they can request it as a one-time, and in the next month, it goes back down to the twenty-five hundred. We can take that out, and they have to come ask every time.
I, I like the exception, uh, if it's this time, and then, like you said, that, that could be a discussion, I mean, the judge has, I mean, if there's conferences or that they need to go to at that time, hey, my plane ticket, I can't get a plane ticket for less than three, you know, three thousand dollars on trip. At that time, the one-time, but if it's continually, I think it needs to come before the board. Because that was evident. It was evident when it was first discussed, and that was my second meeting, so. And we had a problem.
Well, I think it should come before the board, if they're going to spend more than twenty-five hundred dollars and let us approve it.
Yeah, I mean, I.
What if it's a month away from the board meeting? That, that's my.
So if they, so if an elected official has the travel and training budget, and, and they got to go to a conference, and it's going to cost a little bit of money for plane tickets and, and rooms and things like that, and it's going to be more than the twenty-five hundred, that's where we're asking for a one-time increase. And then for them to pay for those expenses, and then it would go back down to the twenty-five hundred.
And then who would, who would, who would be the oversight on that? Who would actually make, would it be our, our county?
Juicy.
Juicy.
Oh, Juicy would. So she would raise it, and then she would, then pull it back every, okay, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yeah. But they could only do that twice a year. And then if they want to increase it permanently, they have to come and get permission from you guys.
And I, and I would agree with what Mike's saying. A lot of these class, I mean, you go to get a motel room now, it's four hundred bucks.
Vegas, oh, God.
Yeah, you stay three nights, and then if you have anything else, you quickly jump over that.
So you're thinking the twenty-five hundred is not enough?
No, no, I think that just a, just a two increase a year. I don't see there being many more conferences or things like that, that are more than twice a year that cost that much, so I think that.
Yeah, the only way they'd come before you guys is if they want a permanent increase. They want their limit increased permanently.
Okay.
Then they'd have to come and ask.
Sounds good to me. Okay, is there any, uh, public, uh, discussion on it or comments? Okay. Um, so do we need to make, can we approve it based on those changes, and it can come back to be ratified, or, or how does that work? Or just?
They can approve it with the changes, correct?
It'd be better if we had it back with the changes, but, um.
If you guys want to see the changes, we can put it back.
Yeah.
You said it, you said it on the record here. I, yeah, you can just do this, I guess.
Okay, so, uh, basically, uh, I'll hear a motion then, to accept it based on the changes that have been discussed. If we have that motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the updated county, county policy and procedures, credit card agreement for Lander County credit card users with the amendments we're putting on it.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so JR made the motion, Mike seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass these unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Lake.
Thank you guys for, uh, and your quick response.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll go to item nine. For discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the amendment to the contract between Lander County and Oasis Online in an amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand for a total contract amount of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
So Commissioner, this is a, uh, the amendment, the contract we have with Oasis is a four-year contract, and they have since taken on additional duties of two other elected officials' offices. Um, and I, I let Molly speak to, to her office, and to what they're doing for that office, and some of the cost savings that come with this.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
So we've asked Oasis to, um, come in and help us with our IT. Um, when I come in for the budget hearings, you'll see on my, um, payroll that my, um, payroll will be, well, you'll see a decrease in that to kind of reflect the increase on this part of it. They, um, what they're going to be doing is they have offered to send a person down for us that will be here during our election time, that will be just for us. So, um, during the two-week period of early vote and for on election day, they will be here, to where they will be just ours. And Nico will still be here doing everything else, and also they have, um, said, if we needed, they would even send the two people down to come and help us. They are going to come down and help, um, and learn all the training, all the equipment. They will be here. They're sending people to come and learn all of that. Like, right now, we have, um, six brand-new computers they're working on and setting up, and they're going to come down and send extra people down to finish those for us and everything next week as well.
All right. Thank you. We have any questions? Any discussion from the public? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
I motion to approve the agreement contract between Lander County and Oasis Online in the amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand for a total contract amount of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars.
Okay, we have a motion from Mike. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
JR seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass these unanimously. We'll go to item ten. For discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the Austin Airport Rules and Regulations as recommended by the Austin Airport Board.
Um, is, uh, is our Chair, Ray Williams, in the Austin office? Michelle?
Michelle, are you there?
I'm here.
Is, uh, Mr. Williams happen to be there?
No.
No? Okay.
Okay, well, um, basically, this is, this is the new one that we have, uh, put together. We found the other one was extremely old. And so we want you to take a look at it and see if, um, if it sounds okay that we can approve this and kind of go by, by this for, um, our rules and regulations for the airport board.
Any questions, discussion, the board, public? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the Austin Airport Rules and Regulations.
Patsy made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
JR seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass these unanimously. Go to item eleven. For discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove Resolution twenty-two-three dash oh-two, the resolution of the Lander County Board of Commissioners supporting coyote calling contests.
So I'm sure the Commissioner is aware of, uh, the Assembly Bill that is trying to ban coyote calling contests, and, uh, we had a request to put this on the agenda to oppose that, and so it's sitting before you. I did a copy and paste on this. Um, made it pretty simple, so.
I thought they already had something on. Uh, was it the BLM or something? There was some area, I don't remember if it was for service or BLM. But I remember, um, them coming into our office a couple of years ago and saying, you, you can't be shooting coyotes on that property. And I thought, really?
Not to my knowledge. Uh, that would be news to me. Um.
Yeah, because we were, we have several of them in, in Austin, and we have had for some time. And, um, I wondered, okay. Well, they seemed to think it wasn't proper back then, so, all right, but now this bill would take care of it, for sure.
No, the bill is to, to outlaw.
Yeah.
Yes, it would take care of it.
Oh, yeah.
The bill would take care of it, but.
That's, that was, that's what we're actually, the resolution is o- opposing.
Right, exactly. So, is there any discussion from the board or from the public? Questions? Okay, so, uh, we, if we do, uh, if there's a motion to accept it, we will need to read the resolution into the record? Yeah? Not you, I know you. Would you like to read the resolution then?
That letter?
Yeah. If you, if, if your motion is to accept it, we need to read it in.
So this is for us, we're going to send a letter out that says.
Well, yeah, basically, it's, it's a resolution, is what it is.
Yeah, you're creating the resolution.
Okay. So all of them, Brian?
Uh, yeah, so just basically, you could just say, I make a, a motion to, uh, accept the resolution, the number, and then read that resolution into the record.
Okay, I make the motion to support the resolution of Lander County Board of Commissioners supporting coyote calling contests, number twenty-two-three dash zero-two.
Then you have to read the whole.
Yep.
Okay. Whereas the Board of Lander County Commissioners exercises general responsibility for the welfare of its citizen, citizenry. Whereas Lander County recognizes and appreciates that the state of Nevada holds a diverse and abundant variety of wildlife, all of which are recognized in having some degree or level of value in our culture and society. Whereas Lander County's economy and culture are heavily rooted in and dependent on the livestock and agricultural-based industries, as well as outdoor-related industries such as hunting and fishing. Whereas many species of animals are very opportunistic, adaptable and prosper in a variety of habits with the ability to thrive and multitude of food sources. Whereas certain predatory species such as coyotes, which left unchecked and unmanaged, can threaten, in some cases devastate both livestock populations as well as other valued and cherished wildlife populations. And the coyote is defined relatively to its prowess and statute is recognized as a non-game wildlife species in Nevada with no season or bank limit. Whereas certain government wildlife predator control programs utilize millions of dollars to manage predator populations. And whereas certain wildlife contests such as coyote contests complement the effort at predator removal, thus reducing other taxpayer-type funding and similar contributions. Whereas it is necessary for all cultures and user groups to recognize the common sense balance that must exist between humans, prosperity, production, habitat, and healthy wildlife populations absent social and emotional bias.
I'll second.
There's a, there's a second page.
Oh. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lander County fully supports the continuation of coyote, coyote hunting contests relative to vibrant and friendly competition within the legal boundaries of cap- of applicable reg- regulation. Hosted and adopted this ninth, ninth day of March twenty-two-three.
Okay, and, uh, yeah, great. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, pass this unanimously. Thank you, Mike. We'll move into item twelve. For discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the affidavit of publication of notice of sale and return of sale of the county delinquent real, real property tax sale held February twentieth, twenty-twenty-third in accordance with Section three sixty-one point five-nine-five of the Nevada revised statutes. Juicy here?
Juicy, are you there? Hi, can you guys hear me?
Hi, Juicy.
Hey. So this is the result, result of my tax sale that I held, um, online. I had a total of fifty-five parcels, forty-five sold and ten did not. Um, out of the ten, two of them I pulled off to put on the next tax sale to sell with the mobile home included. One was removed, because it was paid prior to the sale, and seven had no sale bids. And the total collected was two hundred eighty-six thousand five hundred one dollars and eighty cents.
Okay, thank you, Juicy. Uh, do we have any questions on that, Patsy? Questions from the public? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the affidavit of publication of notice of sale and return of sale to the county delinquent real property tax sale held February twentieth, twenty-two-three in cordon, in accordance with Section three sixty-one dash five ninety-five in the Nevada re- revised statutes.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mike seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass these unanimously. Okay, we'll move into item thirteen. We'll recess the Board of the Lander County Commissioners and convene the Board of the Lander County Health Board composed of the Lander County Board of Commissioners, Sheriff Ron Unger and Dr. Troy Ross. I don't need to read the item in, right? He, uh, Mr. Ross will read it in.
Yeah, he is your Chair for the Board of Health, so he'll have to come up and say.
There we go.
Muted. Unmuted.
Alright, I think I can function without. I'm official.
That's always on.
It's on, okay, thank you. Alright, I would like to convene the Lander County Board of Health meeting. And with that, there are three items for consideration today. Item A is for informational purposes. This is something that has come to my attention that according to NRS.
Doctor Ross, you have, you have, would you mind reading that, item A in to the record, please?
Item A, which is for information. This is expanding the health officer mandated functions. The background for this is NRS four-four-zero-point-one-nine-zero directs that the county health officer shall act as a collector of vital statistics for his or her county. And to inform the, the board and the public on this item. Typically, the state has collected the vital statistics for the rural counties. And I'm not aware of any of the other county health officers that have taken on this role, but it is something that is in statute. And it is expected that the county health officer will be the individual who collects the vital statistics, issues birth and death certificates. And in regard to deaths that the actual, uh, death of the individual is verified by the health officer. These statistics are collected and then submitted to the State Office of Vital Statistics. So I've been in contact with the State Office of Vital Statistics to start the process of being integrated into that function. Haven't had anything back from them on, on how we will implement this, but it's my intent to comply with NRS and to take this on at the county level. Any questions from the, the board? Or public?
How's that statute, has it, has it been on the books quite a while?
Yes, yes, it has.
Can I ask one question?
Certainly.
More about it, Jason Blake for the, the record. Can you tell me what is entailed in the vital statistics? What are the specific areas that, that are collected?
The, uh, actual submission of birth certificates and death certificates. Now, the death certificate is initially started with the attending physician, but ultimately gets submitted to the vital statistics department and it's through the county health officer.
And it's only those two statistics that the state follows or public health mandates?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Robert Quick for the Sheriff's Office, how is that going to affect the coroner's office? Currently, the coroner signs the death certificates through the vital statistics portals.
Correct, and that process still will be in place. It's my role as the health officer just to validate the accuracy of the information that is on the, the death certificate.
Okay.
So does that go the ability to give, if you or anybody else the ability to change the death certificate?
No, it would be the attending physician or the coroner that, that actually finalizes that information. I'm just the, the quality check, the, the health officer is the, the quality check over that information. Any other questions? Yeah?
So it's basically just another level, it's gonna go to you before it goes to the other vital statistics.
Correct. So a little more local control of, of that information. Alright, moving on to item B. This also is for information only. And this is regarding addressing the opioid use and dependence issues in our rural communities. So to let the public and the board know, our county is currently working on a video production that's intended to highlight the impact of opioid, street drugs, and medications in our communities. There will be a follow-up program developed to coordinate the efforts of local agencies such as community health, the school district, Battle Mountain General Hospital, and state agencies. With the intent to build capacity and coordinate the ability to offer support to the community members who struggle with substance abuse and dependence. We are hoping to have that video, that public service video completed within the month, I would expect. And then I would like to present that to the Board of Health and offer that as a, a screening to our communities. With that being the starting point of what I would like to use to bring agencies together that are involved in, in this issue. I, as I've looked into what's being offered in the rural communities, there really isn't anything that is comprehensive that provides the ability to address the issues of people that are struggling with substance abuse until they kind of run up against law enforcement issues or get into an acute situation and end up presenting to an emergency department for the, the care and extremists. And I would like to put together this program that I'm envisioning to offer services ahead of that. Find people at risk and make sure that, that our substance abuse services, treatment and prevention services are actually integrated and are offering more to the, the people of the community than, than what we've been able to do in the past.
You know, I have a question for, uh, you, Robert, is that, um, you know, headlines are, the fentanyl that's coming to this country is just like blown up. I mean, have we, have you, uh, as a law enforcement agency, seen an increase in fentanyl within our own community? I know there have been some deaths, but outside of that, is it, is it, is it a problem in our community?
It is, we have seen an increase in fentanyl and as a matter of fact, uh, we recently assigned a deputy to the tri-county drug task force who has seen a substantial increase in fentanyl in the tri-county area as well. And, um, it appears that, um, uh, meth and so forth is being cut more and more by fentanyl because it's cheaper. Which is posing a serious, serious risk to the health of our kids and adults.
Alright, thank you. And, and it is something that I've seen historically, we've put a lot of effort into the, the tail end of, of enforcing the drug laws, which we absolutely need to have in place, but not enough from my estimation in that demand control of, of finding people who are just starting to struggle with that or are drawn into those, um, those habits and, and those lifestyles. And I think that's where we're going to have a lot better result is when we can put these programs together to address that demand control, that upstream piece of all of this problem that, that's still evolving.
Yeah, I, I mean, honestly, I think it's a huge public awareness issue and it's like, we're, we've definitely done right by creating this video to get out to Lander County. Because I, I, I don't know if it's necessarily known that, how dangerous it is. And I, I think a lot of these kids that are taking this stuff for a high, they just need to know the risks that are involved with it and that it is a very deadly drug. So I just think it's a lack of public awareness and I think we're doing the right thing with this video, so.
Good. So on the video, I just would like to make a quick comment, I didn't make false promises as commission, I do have the video in hand. However, when we reviewed the video, it did not have the, the impact that we were looking for, it didn't, um, I don't feel that it's doing the justice to the family that, that is deserved. So, um, we are doing some final edits to put that where it needs to be. Um, but when, when we reviewed it, it was not what we had in mind and we wanna make sure it's right before we put something like that out.
Are there any public comments?
I like that statement, Bert, prior to coming down here, I worked at the Walker Center. Working on my CADC as a, as a counselor for, I mean, the drugs now, the fentanyl and everything else is way more than I, I dealt with, basically, the, the narcotic piece of it. So I like that piece, there are some really good ones coming out, um, that, that, that addresses it, that do it, we can use, I think it's all done, a lot of people are using the same group, so. I, I like it, I'm glad that we're holding back to make it ready and, and the right thing to roll out. It has the impact, but that's, you know, that'd be respectful too, but. So, but I like the proceeding of it.
I got something to add, I got to go announce to the record, this is a public comment. You know, the lagging indicators is what we hear about, Dr. Ross, and I, you know, some of these passed and this is the reason why, and it's fentanyl. And you have families that are affected, it's devastating, the price of that, you can't put a value to. But leading indicators is what creates the change.
Correct.
And this is wonderful with the video, but, and addressing the other areas within our community. The more leading indicators you put out there, you do more of the lagging stuff that you're looking for. And being in the safety and health.
Sorry, being in the safety and health profession for years, we always look for how many leading indicators are we working on that's gonna make a difference to what we want. And just wanted to say, I think it's wonderful that the county's doing this, uh, and it's, it's gonna hopefully make a big difference.
I've got one question.
Yes?
Bert, do you know, have you any idea when this video is going to be available and what's the duration of time that the video takes?
The current video is about eight minutes long. And, uh, and we are hoping to have, depending on, uh, on the Dr. Ross's piece getting, getting corrected, we're hoping to have it out the fifteenth. Um, now that, that is varying on, on Dr. Ross's piece and, and how fast they can put that back in there and correct that, um.
Cool, maybe I'll just sit up here for a second.
Um, so I, I participated in a, Jason Blake for the record, I'm kinda excited about this, this is a cool thing. A couple of months ago, I attended a Frontier County Coalition Meeting down here at the Owl Club and, and we were talking about a lot of the drug and, and alcohol use of our, our youth in the community and, and the tri-community, uh, tri-county areas. Um, and there was a, a, I don't even know the lady's name and I, I'm sorry, I don't know her name, but she, she made a comment that I thought was really great. She talked about a health fair specifically for kids. And I was sitting by Brandy Bangoa, uh, she's not here, I saw her earlier, and I said, man, that's a good idea. And so I took it back to the hospital and we started rolling it around a little bit, trying to figure out how we could do it, how we could pull together some, some good things specifically for kids. Uh, since then, I've reached out to Brandy, I don't know if she has spoken with you, Dr. Ross. I've also reached out to Kelsey from the school, um, and we're trying, my team and those two teams are trying to bring together a school health fair. Um, kind of a roadshow type thing, uh, it's not gonna be a traditional health fair, but we're going to select specific topics um, that we feel we need to address with the kids for education and then have kind of a rotation where we spend maybe eight minutes, ten minutes with the kids to talk about different subjects. I think this would be a great thing to show to the kids. Um, and we're talking about going and doing a specific, uh, um, presentation for the elementary sku- kids and a specific one for the, the junior high kids and one specifically for the high school kids. And so, uh, I think this might be a great opportunity for the school and the hospital and the community health to work together to figure out what topics are most needed and how are we going to present them to the kids. We wanna do it before schools let out. Um, because I feel that we need to give them as much help and information before they leave school for their summer break. So maybe they can make some really great decisions and not get themselves in trouble while, while they're out playing around during summer. And so that's something we're looking at, um, I hope it fits along with this item, but I think this is a good opportunity with your video.
Thank you, Jason, that is exactly the type of collaborative efforts that we need to get going, but then also make sure that we sustain. And, um, and absolutely wanna work with, with your group on that. And, um, and I actually have some communication going with one of the social workers in the school on, on this topic. So I'm hoping that I can link up with her later today and I'll, I'll take that to her and, and let's, let's build this into something.
I kinda think that the board ought to get behind them on that. If they need help. Getting that set up.
Rebecca Lake for the record, I was just wondering if maybe we could bring that health fair to the library one day because we do have a lot of homeschool students that come in and are a part of this community and I think they need to be included into this as well. They're just as much at risk as anybody else.
Absolutely, good point, or, or maybe make sure we invite them into where it is being held and it doesn't necessarily have to be held at the school. We have other venues and that maybe would help those, the homeschooling population feel a little more, uh, welcome included rather than, than putting it into the school buildings. Alright. There are no more comments on that item, we'll move to item C. And this is something that I bring to the board for action, to the, the Board of Health. And this is a discussion and possible action for the approval or disapproval of a proposal to take to the county commission, same members, different venue, to authorize the establishment of a full-time community health medical provider. So we have built capacity in our community health clinic and that is our place where we implement the public health measures that we want to offer to our communities. And that has grown to the point where we have had a, a physician in the clinic. I think that has offered a very worthwhile service to the people of our communities. That physician is now retiring and so as we have considered how we can maintain and even improve on that capacity, it's, uh, come up for the consideration of having a full-time medical practitioner. And I would like to suggest that the most efficient way to accomplish that, minimal cost, but still really offering the services that we would want to have available would be to have that be a nurse practitioner. Nurse practitioners are completely independent in their provision of care and, uh, come at about probably two-thirds the, the cost of a, a medical doctor or a D O. And the reason for my proposing that we have a full-time practitioner is to cover the growth of services that, that we've anticipated that we'll have. And in addition to our community health clinic here in Battle Mountain, we do have a, a part-time clinic in Austin. Right now, that is being staffed by Nevada Health Centers. I've been in communication with that group and they are very positive with the idea of a practitioner that comes from our community health center here that could augment the services and with the potential to even take over the services in the Austin clinic. And so there's that. And so there's that justification for this proposed position. Uh, then in recognizing that our hospital and their outpatient clinic have the primary care services covered, uh, we'd like to make sure that this provider in community health is able to focus more on the, the public health and preventive services that I think are best provided by Lander County Community Health and, and our public health service. Um, with that, the next step, should this proposal be approved, would be to develop a formal duty description and then take that to the County Commission for approval and then start a recruitment.
Um, Dr. Ross, you, one of our documents we have in here, you have an estimated cost for a nurse practitioner of a hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. That's based on a, uh, two thousand and eighty, uh, work year. Uh, where did you come up with the, the, the a- the average rate of pay for, for the nurse practitioner?
Th- this is Bureau of Labor Statistics information.
Okay, so it came right from this.
Right. From their, uh, two thousand and twenty-one assessment.
You know, I s- I still like the idea of us doing our community health and, um, that, that is preventive. It's a lot of things like that. And I just, I don't know why we want, why we need a full-time physician, um, or a nurse practitioner for that matter. Um, I would like to leave that up to our hospital and I, I'd like to keep this, especially now that we've lost our, our physician, um, just a community health, um, program like we've always had before. I, I don't know whether we can justify the kind of money that we really were spending, um, for, and I, I know why we did it, um, at the time. But I'd like to see us just kind of separate that now and, uh, and leave it community health and not go any further. I think we don't need to be in competition. We have enough things on our plate right now that, that the county is stepping up to do.
First off, I, I would like to just say that I, I still don't believe it's competition. We're serving taxpayers. And correct me, Dr. Ross, if I'm wrong, you said that this service has been, been utilized and is, and is trending, right, going up?
Correct.
Okay, so, so we're doing a service for, for a group of people out there that, that want it. And you would anticipate that by going with a full-time nurse practitioner, that we could even be busier and, and have a person to, uh, take care of Austin and, and Kingston, I would assume.
Correct.
Uh, that, it's not a competition. As a competition, we would be taking somehow a service away from our taxpayers. We're not taking it. We're adding, it's a benefit. It's an added benefit to our taxpayers. For people that don't, for whatever reason, don't want to go one place, they can, they can come to the community health center. And, and again, it's, it's more preventative, that type of stuff. I mean, still, if there's anything serious, anything inside of our scope, they're going to be referred to our Battle Mountain General Hospital.
Right. And to address that issue specifically, I would want to ensure that it's formalized that we will not offer primary care services in recognition of the clinic at the, the hospital that's there for that, that role.
Right.
So you wouldn't offer it in Austin either?
But in, that brings up a good point. No, that would be specific to the areas that were, are in the coverage of Battle Mountain General Hospital. So I would suggest that should the services ever grow to the point that those primary care services are offered in the Austin community, that, then we wouldn't, but that you bring up a, a very valid point that we would have to, to be able to do primary care services in that community.
Um, yeah, that, that's a little bit different. You're right. Um, but I do know, uh, when we hired our last physician, that was part of it. We thought that he also would be able to go to Austin and cover that and that didn't apply at all, so.
Well, I don't know that that is, uh, so we were hoping to implement him with, um, Rural Health and that never ended up mending like we wanted it to, but I don't think the intent of hiring him was solely for Austin and.
No, of course not, but I'm saying that was part of, of what we were considering and that didn't work out either.
Yes, his time, his time was taken up down here. The, um, and Jason's, Jason's here for, for Battle Mountain General, but they... The hospital is all of Lander County. It is not just Austin or Battle Mountain. The hospital is the, is to cover the whole Lander County. It's so, so I think that we're, we're trying to split hairs here when we're saying, well, we will provide this for Austin, but not for Battle Mountain. There's, there's got to be some sort of agreement that, that we can work out in community health with, with Battle Mountain General Hospital to mend both. I, I agree with what Dr. Ross is saying. Um, we shouldn't probably be dispensing, um, opioids out of the, out of our clinic, right? Like, they can go to the hospital and, and get that done and, and then there is the, the side that Jason's saying he feels like there's a little bit of competition there. Um, some of them can be mended, but also if that is the case, then we need to make sure that we're looking at this as a whole picture and that Battle Mountain Hospital is supposed to be taking care of all of Lander County. That line is drawn all around us, not just Battle Mountain. So we have to make sure we don't mix and match here and, and make sure that we can do it where it works for both of us.
Okay, so if we're not doing primary care and we're not doing blood tests, why would we be going to the community health center?
Well, no, we would certainly offer preventive services and that would include lab testing, evaluations for metabolic health, uh, markers, risk factors for chronic disease. That's all part of preventive s- care services. It just, I don't want our community health center to be involved in primary care and chronic care services. That's more appropriate for the clinic and, and hospital.
Can you give us an example of what primary and critical care would be considered?
Primary care would be someone with hypertension and heart disease that needs ongoing management, that needs a, a primary care physician or clinician to continually monitor and treat and adjust treatment plans based off of that person's progression in, in that disease process. So that would be the, a continuity of care type model and that's not what I would want to see us doing in community health.
So if we, so if some, so if a citizen had the, had the sniffles and wasn't feeling really good, he could come into the community health and they would be seen. Now, upon that visit, if they found there was something that was serious, obviously the referral would be made to the Battle Mountain General Hospital.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or issues from the board on this?
I, I think at the time it served a purpose with the pandemic and that, but I'm the opposite end. I see this as, as an extension. This is spending on taxpayers' dollars that can be handled if it had a private sector. I do, I believe it's competition. I believe it serves a purpose, but, uh, off of that, we can go with the, to, so before, if somebody goes in with the sniffles, it was, uh, the community nurse would still see them and still could treat them, right, without having a nurse practitioner? This has expanded services from what we were at prior to the pandemic stage, because we had community health.
No, a, a registered nurse isn't able to diagnose and treat. There are limited provisions to provide services under protocols, but those have to be defined ahead of time and, and have a very limited scope. So that's, this would, to not have a, a licensed practitioner in the clinic would decrease the, the scope of our services. But there still are services that, that can be provided by a registered nurse.
Every expense in this clinic, e- every addition to this clinic comes with an expense to the taxpayers. That might be provided at the hospital or the surrounding care providers. So if we're taking blood, are we just paying the hospital to, to, to test the blood in the lab or are we going to, are you planning on putting in a lab?
Oh, we have a lab. We have, we have a limited lab now. Uh, the one thing that we've started testing is vitamin D, which has a very significant impact on a person's overall state of health. Uh, for instance, if you go to the Battle Mountain General Hospital price listing for services, the, the cost for a vitamin D test in their lab is over three hundred dollars. We're providing that for less than thirty in, in our clinic. So that's, and, and, you know, you could get into parsing out what, how much of that is covered by somebody's insurance, co-pays, what's out of pocket. But, um, in the end, when we are able to target a very specific set of services that address the, the public health needs, preventive services, I think that it's a cost savings to the, the community. However, you want to, to, you know, parse that out, insurance coverages, co-pays, out-of-pockets, uh, th- there are a lot of, of complex factors there. And, and we can still do some of that without a licensed practitioner, but to have that practitioner does definitely expand our scope of services with the intent of covering the Austin community.
But we have a matter of health.
Correct.
That, that provides them. So we're doing, we've got basically good coverage down there.
Which, which, which the county pays for now. I don't have the, the numbers there. Uh, in addition, right now, through community health, we are covering the jail population. That would have to, to be negotiated with the, the hospital or the clinic i- if we lose our practitioner there as well.
So this, so what's, what is your role? I, I, I'm, so you're a medical doctor and you're, you're the, like, the overseer of the whole program or you don't, and you don't see no patients?
I can, but I typically don't. Obviously, I'm, I'm not local, so living in Reno, I'm not able to, to see patients on an, an ongoing basis. But there is that, that potential.
So if it, will that have to, that, this contract will have to stay in place? If we bring in a nurse practitioner, to that, like, for costs, so, so to say, I'm, I'm questioning the cost. I, I'm, I'm still at the cost.
Certainly.
Is it necessary to have you and a nurse practitioner?
Well, I serve as the health officer, which is a different role than a clinician in the community health clinic. Also, I bill my services to the county as you use me. So if I'm seeing patients, then, then I'll bill for that. But i- if not, then it would be that nurse practitioner or whomever else we might have in community health that would be providing that service.
Can, can anybody tell me how much we pay Nevada Rural Health now?
I apologize, I don't know.
We don't pay any, we, we don't pay them anything. We simply, um, pay for the cer- the, the rooms that they use, the, the building that they use. We pay the rent on that.
We give them a grant, but we don't pay them to run the hospital.
We don't pay them anything.
Okay. So what is the amount? Did you say it?
It, it varies on their grant requests every year, but typically it's for their rent of the building and then anything that they may need.
Until they make the proceeds from seeing patients?
Mm-hmm.
Do we have public comment here?
Yes, please.
Amy Nelson. Um, I'm trying to get all my thoughts together. So I think over the last couple of years, one thing that I learned and a lot of us learned was about local control. And I think we found out how important it was that this county represent the citizens of this county, the residents of this county. Um, we changed our library as a result of it because we didn't feel like we had local control. It was a big win, a big win. I go to the library weekly. I love the library. Sh- Becca does an amazing job. Um, local control even over the coyotes. We, we have to have it. We saw over the last three years, the abuse of power primarily at the federal government, but it even came down to the state. And we lost, uh, trying to say this the right way. The abuse of power and the mandates led to a lot, a loss of local control. And this county, through ordinances and resolutions, took back control. That's how it's designed. The United States Constitution limited the power of the federal government. Clearly, that has been decimated. The state of Nevada Constitution limits the state's control over counties. Clearly, the last three years, we saw that get compromised. I was so excited when Lander County put in ordinance and resolutions that protect me as a Lander County resident. And if, if something goes amiss, I have the opportunity to come speak to it and potentially see it changed to better represent me. That's not the case when, when a, a hospital system or a school district or a federal government or private industry is beholden to a, a larger entity. This county protects county citizens and I choose to go to the Lander County Health Clinic and, um, need to be able to get my preventative care done there because I'm very proactive medically. And it's going to cost less money because I am not going to ideally have to go in for reactive type things because I'm ahead of it. Um, and I think that's the shift that we're trying to make, even what Jason was talking about with doing health fairs. Let's, let's get into wellness instead of reactiveness. That's a whole nother conversation. I implore you as a, as a county commission, after this closes out, to remember there are people, there are citizens in this community that need access to healthcare that is not beholden to outside interests. We deserve, we pay taxes and we deserve, uh, a health clinic that respects and honors the ordinances and resolutions that, that, that the commission put in place.
For the record, my name is Wayne Neveter. Here recently, most recently, I've been, uh, experiencing a lot to do about state and federal control. Most of it's with the wild horses. We have a devas- an environmental devastation going on in Lander County, Nevada because of state and local, and federal control that, uh, rules us today. Earlier today, uh, we debated seventy thousand dollars on Medevac and we had a split board on that. That would have saved county, county, county people, people money and so, and you guys were very split on that. And I look at this as another opportunity to save county money. I would urge you not to be split on this because we don't need control from, from Utah. We don't need control from Reno. We don't need control from Las Vegas. We need local control and thank you for your consideration.
So please, I have a question. So, so you would be in favor of the?
I would be very in favor of this. I think my, my hypothetical question that I asked you earlier is not, not so hypothetical. You know, because, uh, one time I did get injured really bad and I was in the wilderness area and I had to get a Care Flight. And Care Flight wouldn't fly. None of these flights would fly. I ended up, I ended up getting a, getting a plane ride from a, a Fallon Naval Air Station. And, and, uh, uh, that wasn't cheap. Okay, and, and any chance we get a chance to save our, the taxpayers, I'm the taxpayer. Anytime I get a chance to save the taxpayers money, it's not your money, as all of you have stated. It's not your money. It's the taxpayers' money. And if we've got an opportunity to send a, send a nurse practitioner down to Austin one day a week, maybe two days a week, we've saved the taxpayer money that is in the same position as I am. They're retired and they don't, they don't, they're not quite old enough for Medicare or something like that and they, and they've got a, uh, to straddle the fence. And this gives them the ability to make a choice and that's what all of our tax money is supposed to be for, is to make that choice. Thank you.
I just want to clear up some of my notes. Um, for the record, my name's Tracy Price. I missed, um, Dr. Ross. What did you say this nur- nurse practitioner was going to cost?
About one hundred and twenty, one hundred and twenty-five thousand for a full-time position.
And we currently have a doctor in there now and he's retiring?
Halftime, correct.
What does that cost?
Our contract for that is about the same amount.
Okay.
That's with benefits. Everybody or that separate?
I'm sorry?
That, that is salary and then you got to include benefits?
Oh, he's a, uh, that's a contract position. So that, that's salary and that's a halftime position.
And the health nurse that's in there now is paid by the state or we paid for that? County too?
Correct.
And what does that cost?
I don't know that number. Salary for our, our nurse.
I believe she makes about ninety thousand a year.
And then in Austin, they have a clinic?
A Nevada Health Center services that, um, twice, actually twice a month. And then we're open another, we're open every Thursday and two Thursdays, we're open in the morning for telemedicine.
And do they provide a similar service to this nurse practitioner? And do they provide a similar service to this nurse practitioner would be capable of?
Yes, correct.
And that's costing nothing because it's granted, it's a grant?
Right, we would just provide their place for them to, and that's true, Nevada Health Center is family controlled. And so where everybody go around to the areas, um the community is to provide a place for them to actually work their services.
And they could do the same service that we would be doing here in Landor, Aaron Badam Mountain?
They don't service Battle Mountain.
I know they don't, but I'm I'm getting that.
Cause Battle Mountain has a hospital.
Right.
And clinic, yeah.
That's what I'm getting at. And then they would um, we would send this nurse nurse practitioner down to Austin one day a week, maybe or whatever?
To to meet the needs.
Okay.
That's the intent. And so I misspoke earlier when I suggested that there was a cost to the county for the Nevada Health Services, Nevada Health Center Services, I apologize for that.
So we have billers and stuff on top of that, does our, does this public clinic bill?
Yes, we do.
We bill insurance, so how, what what's our employee staff on this facility? Uh what do we have for?
We have a an RN and a front office individual now.
And just one front office, or so two?
Correct, two people. Uh, correct.
But that's cha- that would change if this nurse practitioner comes in, the current contract doctor goes, the nurse practitioner comes in.
Correct.
So it stays at the, it stays at the employee's?
Yeah, one way or the other, we have to address the the doctor that's leaving.
Okay.
And we have until May to to come to resolution on on whether we have a new licensed provider or we scale back on our services.
Uh Robert Quick for the sheriff's office, and I think Dr. Ross alluded to this, I just wanna make sure everybody does understand that currently, the physician at the community health provides medical service to the inmate population on site. So it doesn't require us to transport inmates and have that extra added cost, they actually come to the jail to provide services. So if um the county chose or the health board chose not to have either a nurse practitioner or a contract with a doctor, then we would have to revisit that uh like we've had before and I'm don't hold me to it, but I wanna say the contracted doctor that we had prior to the health nurse, we contracted for sixty thousand a year, I think. Uh just for the jail. So there is, will be that added cost.
It's me again, uh Jason Blake for the record. Um just a a couple little points of clarification, maybe. Um so you talked about this position in your clinic over there, providing preventative medicine. Um and then the question from Mr. Sparks was about a cold, sniffles. Um I would include cold and sniffles as primary care, um as a rather than a preventative type met uh medicine. Uh it is an urgent issue, acute right at that time. Um that's the one reason that we do walk-ins over at our clinic. So that if somebody has that acute issue that morning, or it came up that night, we try to fit them right in even without a schedule. Even without an appointment, and so I would I would put out there that um primary care would include these urgent issues as well. The other thing that I have to uh talk about, and I shared, I I sent all of you a a letter. Um and I don't know if I need to read that letter publicly or if it goes in as correspondence. Um I feel that I've got a pretty good staff now, and we we still have capacity to continue to work and see more patients and to do more uh in the community. Um and any gaps that may need to be filled, we we just ask for that opportunity to be able to try to fill some of those gaps. North, south, let's see if there's some way that my current staff can can work with you guys to fill any of those gaps. I like the conversation about reducing the competitive environment, I like that a lot. Um because I definitely don't want to mismanage taxpayer money to pay for duplicate services. Um we wanna make sure that we have good services that are managed across the board in the most fiscally responsible way, but that was the gist of my my letter to you all, and it was signed by by the new clinic manager, um Chris Kunnanen. Also signed by our vice chief of staff, Abby Burkhart, and by our clinic manager, uh Dr. Gennadi Maltsinsky. Um and we are, we're we're committed to help in the areas that we can help, so if there are gaps, we just like the opportunity to try to fill some of those gaps, um and to work with you in that in that way. Um there's been talk about local control in this meeting. Um I enjoy local control, and I feel that through the con- through the pandemic and through some of the chaos and controversy of that horrible event, uh the hospital district and the hospital board, which has always had one of the county commissioners on on our board. Um I feel that we maintained our local control, and I feel that we did um do the proper things to keep this community as safe and to maintain liberty and ability for people to make their own choices. Um whether or not they they performed or had some some uh procedures performed, and so I feel that local control was maintained, and I'm thankful for my board, um even still today, for the the control that they hold um as a as a publicly elected board, and so um I think that covers it all, but if there are gaps, I would like the opportunity to see if our team could help fill those gaps. Um maybe before the decision is made to bring in a full-time person.
So Jason, quick question for you, so thinking along those lines, I was back there thinking, maybe there's a an opportunity to share medical professionals. They can work for Battle Mountain General Hospital, I don't know if this is even possible, and then they would, if that medical professional felt comfortable part of the time or three quarters of the time working for the Lander County, because there is a distinct difference in services and choice. And I didn't feel uh, I was unable to get my medical care done through Battle Mountain General Hospital during the pandemic. So that still needs to be met, those services need to be met in Lander County for people who who um weren't unable to have their services met. With that said, you have access to a lot of medical professionals, maybe there is a way to do a joint service. But when they're at the Lander County Health Clinic, they're not beholden to Battle Mountain General House- Hospital policies because you guys are more beholden to the CDC. These guys, as a commissioner, beholden to their ordinances and their resolutions. They were quite different, they were quite different during that time. So I just, you know, I love the idea of being creative and working together. Um it just, if they're gonna work for both, they have to represent Lander County with the ordinances and the resolutions, like the mask being a choice. As an example, because if we think this is the only time something like this can happen where, you know, that's not.
It's happened once it.
Yeah, it, they will can, you know, there's the World Health Organization and the CDC and whatnot, they're not done yet, so anyway.
That conversation is what I hoped my letter would spark.
Yes.
Is is to have this con- type of conversation, and so, thank you, very good.
I just have a a comment also on um to follow up on Quick's comment, Kathy Freeman from the hospital. Um in the past, we have had an agreement with the county that we would provide the medical services to the inmates, and we would use your sheriff's office for our fingerprinting. We are still currently using your fingerprinting, and so I think that's something that can be readdressed if you choose not to go with the full-time practitioner or nurse practitioner or medical provider, so just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you.
And just for context, for for the whole commission, because I know that um it doesn't, we don't go back to this very often, but prior to the pandemic, when we, when Lander County stepped away from the state and decided we were gonna have our own clinic and not have the state services anymore. Um we were actually bringing in our own nurse practitioner and paying for some schooling to have that, and there was never is when the, when the big rub happened is during the pandemic. And that has been the whole, the whole touch on it, but but if we go back to pre-pandemic and what the the commission was doing and us stepping away from the state, um I think that you take the pandemic out of this, and this is not, this isn't a rub at anywhere. This is what we were planning on doing when we stepped away from the state. Um so that just, that's just for context, I think that there's a lot of, a lot of things here that just a matter of getting everybody at the same table, I don't think that we're as far away from each other as we think we are. Um but we do need to come to the table somewhere there.
Bert, would you mind giving a little bit more detail on that background, for maybe a new commissioner, I mean, cause I I know exactly what you're talking about, but I think it's kind of vague and not everybody might not know exactly what the background was and what we were working on towards before the pandemic.
Yeah, and I don't have the, uh so I don't want to misspeak completely because Keith Westingard was here as the county manager at the time that all that, when we stepped away from the the state. Um but I do know that um, you know, Abby Burkhart, that works currently for the hospital, was the individual that we was working with us at the time, and putting this whole system together that we have since started implementing. Um we went one step further by bringing a doctor on staff instead of a nurse practitioner, but she was taking the schooling, working for the county um with us assisting in that. So she could then provide that service at our clinic. Um and then she moved on to the hospital, which is great for her, um a better deal for her. But it didn't change the the direction that we went as a county, um other than the fact that we couldn't find a nurse practitioner and went with a doctor. So and that's to what Dr. Ross is speaking of, that that we've had this this ongoing care that he's looking at kind of trimming the the edge of that off and going back with a nurse practitioner, which then would work better um with the hospital as far as the the feeling of competition and the aspect of that. So I don't think that that you take the pandemic out of that, that we're quite where we are right now.
Well, I think too, the pandemic, if anything, solidified that we were on the right path doing what we were doing.
It it gave people choice, that's for sure.
Hi, um my name's Hope Bauer for the record, a CNO at the hospital. Um I was involved with this, with the commission back then when um we had gone and asked the county to take over community health, cause there wasn't issues through the state. Um I agree with that, except for um the whole plan was public community health, um determinates of health, all that stuff that go along with it, like you said, preventative care was never talked about to be um a replacement for the clinic or um the hospital. It was all focused on community health and um dealing with some of the issues that we have here. Um alcohol, drug use, um teen pregnancy, all of this was for um the community to come in and get pap smears, um um birth control, all that kind of stuff. And if that's what we're doing, then I think that's a great idea, and I think the hospital and community and public health should work together. We need to do what's best for our community and for the taxpayers. Uh I don't think in the beginning it was ever to be uh public health or meant to go in there to treat a cold or anything like that, it was to take care of immunizations. Um like I said, women's health um and stuff, to help the community become uh healthier before they end up at the hospital. So I just wanted that clarified, cause I was part of that too, so, thank you.
And to that point, I had a conversation with Jason earlier this morning about a community needs assessment that is being run by the hospital, and I think this is very good timing to get a sense.
I don't, I don't wanna be rude, but wanna make sure we stay on the agenda, if you would like to.
Okay.
Uh you do not, I'm just saying that we're getting off the topic quite a ways at that. I just looked back at our agenda item and I wanna make sure that we stay somewhat within the confines of the and we can always agendize this and and put another item on, because I think that it does, it does open up for a lot more discussion for all of us. Um but I also wanna make sure that we we don't open another topic that's not on the agenda.
Thank you, yeah, the the community needs assessment, I think would speak to what this potential position would have a focus on, this clinician in community health, based off of what the community tells us that they need. So and I would wanna stay focused on on that type of of an assessment and that that type of service. Clearly identifying the public health needs of our communities. Any more comments?
Well, for for those of us that were concerned about the cost, it's if if we had this this nurse practitioner or the person that was uh providing the community health, you you have an expense there as well. So it's not like this new expense, right, we were headed in that direction, I just wanted to make sure that we understand that we're not just creating this position or had no intent in what we're doing, I mean, it was a, it was a working place, now there's some arguments on exactly what care would be provided, but I just wanna make sure as far as the dollar amount, we still have a dollar amount intended to be spent for community health.
For what the current contract is for the physician, this would essentially replace that. And whether this contract physician obligation would would continue going forward, there was talk of extending that contract. It's the the retirement of the of our doctor that has driven this new con- new consideration of of rebuilding that that offering. But an equal dollar amount, essentially.
So he goes in May?
Correct.
He says May?
And I think the the assessment would be a good idea, because I can't tell you how many times people have come in and and thanked me for the service that we provide there. They love uh our doctor and our, and and conducive when he's in filling in for full court, I just all the time, I just get thanked, thank you for providing that service, so just whatever that's worth.
I'd like to see some numbers behind it, I'd like a sheet, you know, I've not, A or B, I I see that, I also get the opposite side though, Brian, you know, why, why are we doing this, I mean, I it's it's definitely something that I think we can do a little bit better of of transparency to the public. I think I think with the pandemic, it got sped up, you know? So I I think I never knew there was that much action in in the back end of it to to see it, I think we could definitely still uh last night at the at the hospital board, I was told that it seemed like hurt and and Jason are working very well together, he had that underfoot to report on on the ambulance success here. You've got some of your ideas, he has some of his, but he he reported, hopefully, it was going good.
You made a statement of like working on becoming more transparent, I I think we've been, we've been in all names transparent about this whole thing, everything's been discussed in a public forum, it's never been that door, so if there's something that you that you.
I I wanna see the numbers, so I take my word of defer.
I like the idea of the needs assessment, I think that's, that's a, that's a must, yes.
I agree with that.
Just like I said, right now, I can't.
And so a cost.
I'll add in the the position right now.
A a cost benefit sheet that
Yep.
clearly lets the community, lets the the board and the commissioners understand.
I like to have answers when I'm questioned, you know? And if it's, that you know, if we can put it together and say, hey, here's some of the things we discussed, this is this is what we need, and a little bit more maybe on your part to to say, this is what we're doing, this is what we're seeing, this is how many tests we're having, you know? Then then we have it, and we always have that to to put out when we're called or questioned or anything like that, and we'd say this cost is this because of this. So is it something that we have to do, do we feel we have to go add on today, or can can we get some, a little more data and come back to to move it to the next?
We can, uh, well, we can do both, the uh ideally for the budget, it would be nice if you guys made some sort of action today, because we have to this this becomes a budget item, which you guys know is right around the corner, and Lincoln's ready to kick me. Um the, either way, we're budgeted for the hundred and twenty thousand for the doctor, but that is a contract bu- number, that is not a benefits wages number, so um that they they change.
We have to approve that i- in the next week, today.
Well, well.
Today, because we gotta discuss what we're gonna do in the budget.
And yes, and if not, if you guys choose not to make any action today, is all I would like, is some sort of direction as to how you guys would like to see it in the budget, and that doesn't mean that it ever has to be spent. Um but one way. But one way or the other, so we can either not bother even putting it in there. You go, you know, I wanna see more numbers. Once I see more numbers, then we can make a decision later on in this, but have the money available if that is the case. And we have more open discussion on that. That will make Lakin's job much easier um, if we have the money and we come back.
I I don't think there's any way that we can pull it off at this point. I think we just continue on like we had. Let's do a needs assessment. And we'll determine where we wanna go from that.
And the two, we have more commissioners now with us today, so she has her input too, which if we do. Take this backup, at least you know, we have a full board.
And and we are missing our sheriff as well. So, is what I would like to ask the board is to allow us to budget for the top end of that. And then it will come back before you guys for approval. Um, and for discussion and approval or or denial at a later date.
I think that's a very reasonable way to go forward. There could be a motion to that effect. I I don't know if there necessarily need to be a motion, just be direction back. Yeah, so I think that's what we need to do is carry on direct as and then we'll re meet. Like you said, if we budget, we don't have to spend it. But at least if we do, if the board, if it's the pleasure of the board to go that direction, we'll have the money set aside.
Yeah, the best thing that's ever happened is we have a hospital here. We have us here and everybody's not at high tension. So there's there's potential. I I I really appreciate it.
Is there any other discussion on this item, agenda item? If not, then I'd like to open this up for any non-agenda public comment.
You want me to talk about that needs assessment?
Yes, please.
So in response to my email uh, letter that I sent out the other day, Dr. Ross uh responded back to me and he was interested in. In a a project that we began on Tuesday. Tuesday night, we had Dr. John Packham from the UNR. Office of Statewide Initiatives. He and his team came out uh, and we kicked off this community health needs assessment. We are one of four uh hospitals in the state of Nevada, rural hospitals. That are under this uh, this um, assessment at this point. Uh, the others are down in Mesquite Mesa View Hospital, Grover C. Deals Medical Center in um, in Caliente. Uh, Humboldt General started theirs last night and we started ours on Tuesday. So we're the four that are. They're working right now with Dr. John Packham. Um, and this is kind of a hospital-based type. Some of these questions, hospital and our clinic base, but I think. There may be some good information that we'll gain regarding the whole county. Um, and I've only got, I don't know, ten copies here right now of paper copies. Um, but with technology nowadays, uh, we're putting together a QR code. And we're going, I was hoping to have it all here ready for you today, but I ran the QR or one of my staff ran it this morning and. Found some Humboldt General uh, questions in our survey, so we have to get it switched around, but. We are going to do mass mailings um, to everyone in the community, in the county to try to get as much information as possible. Um, in this community health needs assessment. It, the the information primarily for for my uses. Uh, I need to run my my hospital board through a strategic planning session to start planning for the next segment of. Of our of our careers and uh, um, this information is going to lend to it. I also think it's timely because it could lend to all of our conversation today so that we can all have good information. Current information that uh, tells us what the community and what the county is needing and desiring. Now, of course, there there will always be some stuff that we just can't provide. This hospital over here is never gonna do cardiac surgery. Um, we're never gonna be doing some of those high evasive, difficult uh, things. But there may be some other opportunities in there that we're just not thinking about or we're not seeing. And we could put them into action and put them into play um, to help our community. So. I do have uh, this stack here. Each one of you can have a stack, but just know that a QR code is coming out. Cool thing. I'm learning how to use this phone finally. Um, you just point your camera at the thing, hit the little button and it takes you right to the uh, to the survey. It's a it's a relatively short survey. Uh, it does have some space that you can do your own text and your own verbiage in there. It's not all just point buttons. Um, but uh, our goal is to get as many respondents as possible so that we can have good information. None of this information comes to us initially. It goes directly to UNR. They aggregate all the numbers. They de-identify everybody. Um, I don't get to know where they come from or anything. And they will, uh, Dr. Packham and his crew will aggregate the numbers together and then present them back to us.
What's that, Dr. John? What's his last name?
Packham. P A C K H A M.
And then the the copies you have there, Jason, are those like some of the questions that are asked?
These are, this is the survey.
Oh, can I?
And so uh, yeah, and so I've got those here. I was, like I said, I was hoping to have a QR code, but we found one little problem with it this morning. But uh, we're planning to run this survey period for six to eight weeks. Um, of course, we can extend that as needed if if we feel there's more that needs to be said. Um, but uh. We're gonna try to get as much information as we can so that we know that we're going in the right direction at the hospital. Um, but I also think it's opportune time for us as a county to get some of this information. And so I just wanna, I'll and I'll leave, I'll I'll give you guys a copy and. Anyone else that needs it, uh, look for a QR code or stop by the hospital and we'll, but we're going to disseminate this really soon. Any questions? Any other questions? Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
And these come with a pre-stamped envelope.
Are there any other public comments? Online? Call in? Alright, with that then, I would like to close out the Board of Health Meeting. And turn this back over to the County Commission. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the Lander County Board of Commissioners. Uh, item fourteen, correspondence reports, future agenda items. What's that, Mike?
What we just discussed with this, does this need to be moved to a future gen item or do we need to?
Future Health Board. Oh, you got it? Okay, I got it.
I will have an update from you guys. Uh, hopefully Pam Harrington can attend the next meeting. She's been representing us uh, for the Robertson Mine Project. And uh, she's been doing a great job putting in a lot of hours, so hopefully she can uh, attend and give an update on that. Outside of that, I don't have anything else that that I need on the agenda.
We have the committee and they asked for the dime with the the wild horses and stuff like that. I mean, ask for something kind of speedily to see what it is. So don't drag out forever. I'd like to see Bert if you could reach out to. Somebody from that group and see what information they have. That was uh. Jerry Anderson, some of them to. To see if 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 we're.
They were gonna discuss it.
I believe it was the Pluac Board that was that decided to take that on, so I will reach out and see if they've gained any traction.
Like see if it's, if we paid anything or.
And just a reminder, it's it is budget hearings uh, this coming Wednesday and Thursday, so.
For anybody that I told the sixteenth and seventeenth, we just wanted to get it done easy without you. Kidding.
So if there's no more on item fourteen, we'll move into public comment for non-agenda items only. Do we have public comment? Okay, well, thank you everybody for coming and we'll, oh, we have public comments. Sorry.
Jenny Martin for the record. I'm the court administrator for the Argenna Justice Court. I am here at the request of Judge Fortune. Who couldn't be present. Um, and I apologize, I'm a little at a disadvantage because I didn't attend the whole meeting. But she wanted me just to put on the record and for you all to be aware that um, there was recently a purchase made by the Argenna Justice Court. And we never came down here to let you guys know.
Um, is was this on an agenda item?
No. This is talking about a grant that we received.
Oh, okay, I thought it was a credit card item and I I.
It was purchased with the credit card, but it, we just wanted everybody to be aware that it's, we have a grant that we were awarded. Nope, she um, she just wanted, we were here and I can't remember when, maybe a month or two ago, when she came down and let you guys know about our awesome audit that we had. And when we walked out, I asked her, how come you didn't talk about our grant? And she's like, oh dang, I forgot. So that purchase was made recently for some technology improvements for the court inside the courtroom and in our bailiffs office. Um, I prepared the application for the grant and we were awarded it from the Nevada Supreme Court. So that's that's what was used to make those. Um, it was approximately, of course, I didn't bring down the actual approval. Our bailiff's been working on the purchases approximately three thousand dollars to upgrade the computer system in the courtroom and then get our. Bailiff some bigger monitors so that she can do a better job at seeing the whole courthouse at the same time. Thank you.
Is there any more public comment? Alright, all hear motion.
I make a motion adjourn.
All in favor?
Muted.